Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Monday, April 10, 2017, to order. All members of this board are present. It is approximately 7:03. To apologize, we are running a few minutes late. At this time, I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 40, 40A, 41, and 41A. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
Motion so moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for April 11, 2016, and January 30, 2017. Does anyone have any objections to me taking them up together?
I'm going to abstain from the April 11.
Yes. Okay, so we'll take them up separately? Okay. So, at this time, I entertain a motion for the April 11, 2016 minutes, please, of 2016.
I will move to approve the April 11, 2016 minutes as written.
Okay.
Second that?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous? And with the three, and then two abstention, please. And then, moving on to the approval of the minutes for January 30, 2017. Questions, comments, or motion, please?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Okay, hearing any discussion? None? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay. So here we get to the fun part. Before we get into the agenda, I just wanted to acknowledge that members of this board, the Town Manager and Bev are all wearing an article of clothing that is blue, which is in honor of Autism Awareness Month for the month of April. And as many of you know, as you drive around the Town Common, the Town Common is lit up blue in honor of Autism Awareness Month as well. And just wanted to reiterate our gratitude and appreciation to an anonymous family who donated the actual gel for the lights so that we could have that for the month of April. So, once again, thank you very much to this board and Town personnel for wearing blue. We'll also be wearing blue, or they will be wearing blue, at the second meeting in April as well. So, moving right along to our next agenda item, which is the recognition of Francesco Greco, who is of the Boy Scouts of America. And I do see that we have -- do you prefer Frankie? Frank the Tank? That's what your dad called you, from what I hear. So, we are very honored to have this very distinguished guest here this evening. Frankie Greco is a member of the Boy Scouts of America. And I'm just going to read a little bit of a background here. In the first week of March, Frankie and his family were able to attend a very exciting trip. It was ten youth delegates from across the United States were representing the Boy Scouts of America in Washington, DC, to present the organization's annual report to the nation, to the top US officials. And the report designated in the Boy Scout of America's Congressional Charter highlights the organization's achievements in 2016, including the highest number of volunteer hours served in communities over the last five years. The delegates were selected from among approximately 2.3 million youth members to share the annual report. And I'll just quote a little excerpt here from the Chief Scout Executive. "With a steadfast focus on the four pillars of scouting, service leadership, learning, and adventure, the Boy Scouts of America continues to help build the future leaders of our country through educational and fun experiences," said Michael Serba, who is the Boy Scout of America's Chief Scout Executive. 2016 proved to be a strong year. Scouts and explorers showed compassion and leadership by logging nearly 15.4 million hours of service to their communities nationwide, more hours per scout than we've seen in the last five years. "At the same time, we've also grew our exploring and STEM scouts programs, bringing new and innovative experiences to youth and families. As we share and celebrate our achievements of 2016, we look forward to an even more impactful year ahead." And being selected to report to the nation, national delegation, is an extraordinary honor for the youth. Each young person represents their communities and the more than 100 million youth members who have been part of the Boy Scouts of America and the millions who will follow. And Frankie is here this evening, who is from the town of Wilmington, and you are one of ten people that were chosen, so that is a tremendous honor. So, tonight, what we'd like to do is recognize you, and I do see that you have your whole family here, so I see that you have, I assume, your mom and dad, and your brother and sister. So, we wanted to greet you. Do you prefer Master? Or is Frankie okay?
Frankie.
Frankie's good, okay. So, at this time, we do have a certificate to present to you, but I'd like to offer our fellow board members an opportunity to offer some remarks to you. But I'd like to turn the floor over to you and just greet you officially and give you an opportunity, if you'd like, to introduce the people that you are here with this evening, and if you have anything you want to share with us about your trip. I will tell you that we have seen some wonderful photos of you and your family from Washington. So, at this time, sir, the floor is yours.
So, this is my family, my mom, dad, brother, Rachel, Dominic, DJ, and Rob, and me, my dad. We went to Washington, DC, and the way I got picked was somebody nominated me because, so, it's like a nice man, he made me out of robotic pretty freaking hands, and we got like an idea, and so we tried to help other people. And in Haiti, so I made four other, like, pretty freaking hands for four other kids in Haiti, and that's how I got nominated for the World Youth. And when we first got there, we had a pack, obviously, quickly, and we got ready to breakfast, and then, and then we, um...
It was a full five days, so...
Full time day?
It a lot.
It a lot.
He would give you the blow-by-blow, but I know you don't have...
You knew that every important person in Washington that you can possibly meet and have to present would run.
He was the youngest. He was the only Cub Scout, the youngest.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, and so it's a trying, it's a trying week, but it's a lot of fun. Him and dad had a nice bonding experience, and they got to see a lot of things, go all over places that no person ever gets to do, so...
It's a whole lifetime experience.
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
So, did you have a great time?
Yeah.
Outstanding.
You were part of it.
When you met the president?
How cool for that.
I met all of you.
Outstanding, everybody, yeah.
Could you see yourself living there someday?
Yeah.
I wonder if you really want to live when you grow up?
What else?
What do you want to be when you grow up?
Oh, um, marine biologist.
Marine biologist, wow.
And you always tell me where are you moving, so I have to follow you.
Oh, um, Florida or...
Oh, wow. More to the water. So, you have big plans. We're like, this is great. So, we thank you very much for being here tonight, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my fellow board members, if it's okay with you, and the manager, to offer you some kind remarks. So, I'm going to start to my right here, to the Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got to start off, Frankie, with a question. I got to know, how old are you?
Three?
Yeah.
Ten.
You're 10? Because you just spoke better than I did for a whole year up here. And I'm thinking we should trade seats, because I'm jealous. But seriously, man, awesome. Really, we're really proud of you. You should be proud of yourself. I know your parents are probably really proud, and the Town is proud of you. You're the total package, man. I think you're going to make the best damn marine biologist we've ever seen someday. And so, I look forward to seeing that. But like I said, thanks for everything you did, and the Town is really proud of you, so congratulations.
Frank, very impressive.
Nice job. I started to look through these pictures here, and it looks like you had a lot of fun and met a lot of different people. Just a wonderful accomplishment and a good representation of the Town of Wilmington on behalf of all of us. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations. You know, we hear a lot that kids do bad, but very seldom we hear wonderful things that kids do. And you are a wonderful kid, and you really put, helped put Wilmington on the map. So, you saw President Trump? Man, we should have given him the letter from New England, transferred it to him. Huh?
He could have slipped it.
Yeah.
But you'll get the address, or is it they're only supposed to do the presentations? He was presenting the gifts to a lot of the important people, so you're not supposed to talk, and my husband's like across the room, and all of a sudden, there's like a quiet moment, so Frankie turns to Trump, and he just starts chatting with him and telling him funny stories.
Oh, man.
So, my husband sees him talking, and Rob's like, "Oh, oh." And Trump's laughing, and like, yeah, he's just talking, and he's like, "What is he saying to him?" But that's why they have a Cub Scout there.
Lighten the mood?
Lighten the mood, yes.
It wasn't even congratulations, and I was a Scout. I'm sure many of us have been Scouts, and it's a, it's a great time. My grandma, yeah, my, my mother was a den mother, and early on, and I was with Mr. Avanitis. That's where I've gone, the old Methodist church, years ago. And I loved it. It was fantastic. My wife doesn't like to go camping, but I wouldn't mind someday, again, you know? But congratulations, and, you know, you're great parents. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I concur. I wanted to start with the parents, because it starts there, and you clearly are creating a model environment for your family to, to understand what the value of service above self is. So, congratulations, Frankie. I'm really very impressed. My colleague Kevin mentioned that we have some photos here of you kind of going around in front of monuments and with dignitaries in Washington, and that's a, that's a big deal. And you certainly have shown yourselves deserving of it. I'm awfully proud of you, and I'm sure your parents are proud of you as well. I can see that in your future, marine biology would be great, and I hope that you pursue that. But if you do land here in Wilmington and you live here, I think you should run for the Board of Selectmen.
Do you know who he is?
Yeah.
We saw her earlier today, right?
I just want to turn it over to the Town Manager as well.
I just want to echo my congratulations as well. Scouting is just a great program. My, one of my sons was involved in it, and it, you make a lot of good friendships. There's a lot of great things you do in terms of building character, and you're helping others. So, I hope you have some good times up at Camp Lone Tree and Camp Watuka. And I can tell you, it would not be a complete trip unless there was a massive thunderstorm at Camp Watuka. So, be prepared, as the Scout's motto, right? Congratulations.
So, at this time, as the Chair, I'm going to present a certificate to you, but I also wanted to just echo again how proud I am of you. Tonight is my last meeting sitting up here, so I really wanted to try and have you in before I departed. So, tonight is going to be a night of champions in terms of having you, and then we're going to have a Wilmington hockey team in. And I couldn't think of a better way to spend my final meeting than to spend it with you and your family. So, at this time, I'd like to read the certificate. It's presented to you from the Town of Wilmington. It reads Francesco or Francesco, Frank the Tank Greco. Doesn't say that part. As a Weeble Scout for PAC 126, in recognition of you being chosen to present the Boy Scouts of America Report to the Nation in Washington, DC, I present this to you on the 10th day of April 2017. Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, and also signed by our Town Manager, Jeffrey M. Hull.
I'd say we moved here two and a half years ago, and I, I could like honestly just cry. This town is so unbelievable, like, the whole, the whole PAC is unbelievable. It's like, it's like a second family for us, and for you guys to even do this, like, I, like, cried when, when my husband opened the letter and read it, I was crying. Because you don't get this everywhere, this kind of support, and it feels like, you know, he did something great, but it happened to everybody. And so, I feel like we want to thank you for all the support and for just being an amazing town and for welcoming us and for making him feel even better than he probably ever imagined. Right, Fred?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We just want you to know that you are more than welcome to stay, but we certainly would not be offended if you chose to enjoy the beautiful weather outside. So, make yourself comfortable or feel free to depart. We'll let you choose that, okay? So, we will move on to our next agenda item, which we are going to pause for a brief recess. So, at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, just so we can turn the room over at this time.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Okay. This time, I'd like to invite the Wilmington Youth Hockey Bantam II Team in. Thank you. Come on in. At this time, I do see that we have a wonderful group of young men here and coaches this evening to celebrate your victory. It's the Wilmington Youth Hockey Bantam II State Championship Team, and I do see that we have our coaches here, Raymond McCurry, Mark McCurry, and David Smith. Mr. McCurry, Coach McCurry, can you please give us, actually, both of you, of course, can you give us a brief rundown as the board sits here as to your trip to the championship? And I know that you are extremely proud, as well as your fellow coaches, regarding the accomplishments that you've achieved as a team, and if you can provide us with a summary as to how you came to us this evening, we would certainly appreciate it as a board.
Well, it certainly was exciting for these group of guys to accomplish what they need to accomplish. Started out in October with the Play Downs, where we beat Wakefield 5-0 and Stonem 7-0, might have been vice versa. And at Springfield, we started out, went out of the gate with a 5 or 6-0 win against Pembroke, just so long ago. And then, we beat Twin Cities 7-0. And then, Chelmsford 3-2, brought us into the semifinals in Game 3, where we faced, uh, Holyoke. I think we called them something else, but Holyoke. And then, we finished off beating Waymouth 5 or 6 to nothing. Five!
Were you there, right, sir?
I was there. And it's coming off.
Yeah.
But these guys, they, they really earned it. They did a great job, a great sportsmanship, great teammates. They worked really hard, and they were so focused up throughout the whole weekend, nothing was going to get in their way. They were hyper-focused on that ice rink and nothing but hard work and dedication, and it paid off. Great, great job to these guys.
Which is fantastic. So, a lot of the names, I see the names of the people that are on the roster, and some of you I have seen as toddlers, and I've watched some of you grow. So, it's amazing how you have grown into be the handsome young men that you are here tonight. And you certainly have reached the pinnacle of what you all strive for, all the early morning practices. Your parents and family take the time to get brothers and sisters to different hockey rinks and different sports. So, I'm sure it's been a total family-friend effort to get you here tonight. We are extremely proud as a town to welcome you here, and you truly have been a shining example of what Wilmington stands for. You've really put 01887 on the map, and I hope that you all recognize what you have achieved. These are the best times of your life. I've born and raised in the town, and tonight's not about me, but it's the friendships and it's the, the back barbecues and the games of cornhole and playing with your friends and the video games and getting together and really bonding, you know, as brothers as you get on the ice and get off the ice and spend time together. So, enjoy this. This is a stepping stone, I'm sure, to bigger and better things. You guys are all heading off to high school years and beyond, so the best for you is clearly yet to come. But enjoy this moment, enjoy this victory. You are true champions. This is a night of champions, and this night is for you. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to my fellow board members, and then we're going to call each of you up individually for a certificate to present to you from the Town, and then we'll have a final greeting to you this evening, and then we'll send you on your way. But we do appreciate you being here tonight, and at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Guys, congratulations, coaches, congratulations. Obviously, a really tremendous accomplishment. You should be really proud of yourselves. We're proud of you. So, congrats to your parents, who, you know, picked you up and drove you every day and woke up early and made, made it all happen for you folks. But, the sky's the limit for you guys. You know, anything's possible, especially if you stick together. You guys are the future of our town, and we hope you'll keep going further and further. Who knows? Some of you, some of you guys could be the next Chara, who knows, Yager, one of those guys, and be right, right here from Wilmington. But I got one question, though. I just, I want to know the real scoop. You mentioned you had a couple of big wins over Stonem. I know you won like 5-0 in the championship, but who's the one team you took a lot of pleasure in beating? I mean, there's always one team that you were so happy to beat to get over the hump. I want to know who it was. Who was that one team you took extra special?
It doesn't matter. You're going to win.
All right. Well, that's awesome, guys. But again, congrats, good stuff. Keep it going. Sky's the limit for you guys. I wish you guys the best. Coaches, thanks for all you do for these guys, too. Congratulations.
The best one is all the wins, huh? You must have had a record shutout. What was it, about six shutouts you had? I don't know who the goaltender is. Who's the goaltender?
Not here.
Not here, huh? And the goal scorer, 7-0, 5-0? You had the right combination, offense and defense. I'm sure that the varsity coach, Scanlon, is going to be awfully excited when you guys keep moving up in the ranks, let me tell you. Congratulations, great accomplishment, great representation of the, of the town. Congratulations to the coaches and the parents for all that they've done for you. You should be applauding them every day, giving them big hugs and kisses for what they do for you guys. But, hey, just keep it up, just keep working hard all the time, that's the main thing, no matter what happens along the way, and success will always come your way. Good luck and congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. I guess it's all been said, but, you know, once again, congratulations to you and your coach, and, you know, your parents are very proud. And as Mr. Bendel said, I'm sure your parents are very early in the morning, because that is one sport that you have to be very, very early for. And once again, we have great volunteerism in this community when it comes to sports or whatever, you know? So, don't forget to thank your parents. And I just got to say this one thing. I says, hey, that's one sport I couldn't pay. I was a little bit too chunky. Even with my Bobby O'Reilly hockey skates, I could never get on that ice. But you guys, I envy you guys, honest to God. Thank you.
I echo my, my colleagues. Guys, congratulations to you and to the coaches, but I want to say, I guess specifically, is thank you. Thank you for, in every circumstance, you went out to other towns, or you had other towns come to us, and you represented Wilmington very, very proudly and very, very well. So, all those communities that you went and played in have a very positive impression of who we are as a community because of the way they see you carry yourself. So, I say thank you to each and every one of you for that, and to the coaches for being an example of what that means. And of course, to all you parents, the dedication and the hours that you all put in, thank you very much for what you're doing for your young people here. Again, it's for the betterment of Wilmington, and I tell you what, I think we're going to see you guys back in this room probably sooner than later. Congratulations.
So, at this time, I'm going to call each one of you up, or the Town Manager's going to call you up, and I'm going to present you with a certificate, and they're going to be presented to each play with your jersey number. It's from the Town of Wilmington, and it's going to be called out by name. It's in recognition of your exceptional performance as a member of the Wilmington Youth Hockey Bantam II Team for the 2016-2017 Massachusetts Bantam State Champions. And I will be offering each of you an individual certificate presented on the 10th day of April 2017, signed Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, as well as our Town Manager, Jeffrey M. Hull. So, at this time, I'm going to present the first certificate to number 13, Mr. Anthony Butler.
Number four, Joseph Cornish. Number nine, Andrew Galucci. Number 52, Joseph Hanson. Number 37, Joseph Hartzell. Number eight, Connor Hill. Number 10, Cody Mercury. Number, number 14, Nathaniel Packer. Number three, Liam Prigmore. Number 25, Harry Saronin. Number 44, Zachary Smith. Number 12, Colin Walsh. Number one, Maximilian Churchill. And we have the coaches as well. We've got three certificates here. David Smith.
They grow so fast, let me tell you. So, we'll give it a few minutes just to have the room turned over. We are running a few minutes behind. It's with Scott C. Grant, who is the Chairman of the Fourth of July Committee Regarding the Request to Use the Town Common in the Swain Green for the Annual Fourth of July Festivities. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. As my letter to the board suggests, we're requesting use of the Town Common and the former Swain School site, excuse me, for the 2017 Fourth of July Celebration from Thursday, June 29 through Sunday, July 2. Family Day will be on Saturday, July 1, and our big night with our fireworks and our tribute to veterans and current servicemen, servicewomen, will be on Sunday, July 2. And as I'm fond of saying, the totally unnecessary rain date will be Monday, July 3. Be happy to answer any questions regarding the dates, the celebration, the hours. We're also, I'm also here tonight requesting, as we do each year, that the board exercise its authority to ban outside hawkers, peddlers, transit vendors from within a half mile of the Town Common area during the celebration in order to protect the nonprofit organizations and their fundraising efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that comprehensive presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the Manager, just to see if we have any comments, recommendations.
The recommendation is for approval on both counts, so pretty straightforward.
Okay. So, do you want to take this up now, or do you want to wait till the board to consider for this? What's your pleasure?
I think you can take it up now.
Okay. At this point, I would entertain a motion to grant the request as presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. For discussion, yes, correct.
Yes.
Yes. So, seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. As I say, you've made on the Carnival... Just a quick question. Did you say you made on the carnival? I heard that there was a change, or is there not?
We went out to bid. We had two bidders, and we selected Cushing Amusements.
So there will be a change?
Yes.
And how about the setup of the carnival setting itself? Dave must be aware of what was done and the footprint that was done last year. The same type of rides, I'm assuming?
Yep. Yep. We've already been to the Board of Appeals, and we've gone to the Board of Appeals, presented the same layout. Cushing Amusements, once they were awarded the contract, has been very active. Larry Cushing in meeting with me, meeting with town officials here last week. So I don't expect any issues.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If I may, yeah, you alluded to it. I know you've gone through this with the Board of Appeals, but I suspect that there's folks that are interested to know. What do you have planned for hours of operation and, you know, maybe just a quick run-through of what people will expect this year?
Sure. Thursday and Friday, we're running carnival from 5 to 9. Events from 6 to 9, including our traditional events. Dinner, road dinner every night, concert on the common every night, road race is Thursday night, horseshoes will be Thursday. I'm doing this off the top of my head.
That's good. I'm impressed.
Thursday and Friday. Friday night, we'll have horseshoes, we'll have the hospital bed race, we'll have ladies' two-mile walk. We will have dinner and a concert. And then Saturday, Family Day, starting with the Bicycle and Doll Carriage Parade at 9 o'clock a.m., assembly at 8:45. I'm actually impressing myself.
That's awesome.
And then the carnival runs Saturday from 12 noon to 10 p.m. with a ride special from 12 o'clock to 5 o'clock. And then it's possible Cushing will have a ride special Thursday or Friday night with wristbands. And if they do, we'll have coupons available in the building and around town. And then Sunday, the carnival will run from 1 o'clock to 10 o'clock. The ceremony, our ceremony will be at 7:30 that evening, and the fireworks will be at 9:30 that evening.
Great. Great. That sounds awesome. We're, I think we've mentioned it last year. It's just really great to be back where it belongs and doing it the way that the town of Wilmington has really grown accustomed to. So thank you for you and your committee's efforts ongoing.
I did, it's our pleasure. I did omit one thing. I'm pleased to announce the return this year of Whiffle Ball on Family Day.
Great, great.
We found a location with Mr. Hall's assistance and the generous generosity of the school department.
So we've had a motion that's been seconded, and we've had some discussion. I just wanted to take this opportunity on a personal level just to thank you very much, Scott, for all of your efforts. This will be the last opportunity that I have to publicly acknowledge you and your efforts, you personally, your family, your extended team on the Fourth of July Committee. You've gone through quite an evolution over the years to get to this point. You've persevered. You've maintained your professionalism, your civility, and your friendly demeanor as you've navigated through some difficult waters. And that's a credit to you and to your team to hang in there in the midst of change in sometimes, you know, difficult circumstances. So I just wanted to offer my sincere appreciation to you for all that you do for the town, and you've done so for many years. So I intend to support this, and at this time, I'll call for the vote.
Thank you very much.
At this time, you're welcome. At this time, I'll entertain, we have the motion seconded. All those in favor. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just for clarity, Madam Chairperson, that's on both items? Use of the common area and the transient vendors?
We're going to do it in terms of the request to use the common. That's what I would consider that motion to be. But at this time, we'll just go out of order and we'll do the what to consider just to make sure that the record is clear, if you're okay with that.
Thank you.
So at this point, I would entertain a motion for the, to restrict the hawk and peddlers and transient vendors from conducting business within one-half mile of the Town Common during the celebration.
So.
Okay, motion made, seconded.
Just a quick discussion. I just wanted to say, you guys do a fantastic job. Just wanted to get a couple cents in. You guys do a fantastic job every year. Volunteerism at its best. I see Lou in the back and everything. So just once again, like with the coaches, just Wilmington really does it. That's all, Madam Chair. Just real quick. Thank you.
Do you have any comments on that before we take the vote? Are you also?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right, anything further? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. We are still running about seven minutes behind. I do apologize. It is Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, for the Presentation of the Board of Selectmen Annual Report for the Calendar Year of 2016. So at this time, I would just kindly ask for the indulgence of this board and the public as I present to you the report. Dear fellow residents, on behalf of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, it is my privilege and honor that I submit our annual report highlighting the board's work during the course of 2016. The town achieved a number of victories in 2016 as we also faced some ongoing challenges. Construction of the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility started in late spring and was substantially completed by the close of the construction season in November. This work included the installation of an artificial turf field that can be used for soccer, lacrosse, football, and girls' field hockey. A paved walking path extends from the parking area along a natural rain garden and around an open-air pavilion between two play areas for younger children and around the turf field. The pathway continues between the turf field and the Maple Metal Brook in the direction of the Textron property before looping back to the main area. Two basketball and street hockey courts are featured, along with a concession building and event lawn. The park will be open for use in 2017 and represents a beautiful new public space for all residents to enjoy. While there was significant public inputs seeking to include a dog park as one element of the Yentile Farm Recreation Facility, the final design was unable to include a dog park at that location. Instead, the town constructed a dog park just south of the new recreation space along Route 38 at the entrance to April Field, also known as Town Park. This project, which cost approximately $38,000, was paid through program funds from the Recreation Department and not through the property tax levy. The dog park was constructed to provide separate space for large canines and canines that are much smaller. Since completion in mid-June, the dog park has been a new gathering spot for dogs and their owners. In late April, Tennessee Gas filed notice with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, otherwise known as FERC, suspending any further work on their Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline Project due to the lack of commitments from potential customers. The town and many residents have been attending public hearings and providing comment and vigorous opposition to this project, which proposed a natural gas pipeline that would have extended from Pennsylvania through several Northeast states, including Massachusetts, and continuing into Canada. A spur referred to as the Linfield Lateral was proposed to extend from Drakeett over private property and town-owned land in North Wilmington before continuing to Linfield and eventually to Peabody. The environmental disruption and the degradation from such a project would have been significant. The proposed development of a transloading operation at the Olin Chemical Site on 51 Eames Street by New England Transrail, otherwise known as NET, continues to be a very real concern to selectmen. In response to correspondence sent from the board to the town's congressional delegation, United States Senators Elizabeth Warren and Edward Markey, and United States Congressman Seth Moten issued a letter to the agency reviewing NET's petition, which is known as the Federal Surface Transportation Board, or STB, calling upon that agency to give thorough and careful consideration to the issues raised by the town about the impacts from this proposed project. The board remains vigilant in its opposition to this proposed use of an active superfund site and will continue to press our case against NET's petition. The board is pleased to offer assistance in facilitating the successful return of the July 4 celebration to the Town Common area. After two years of having much of the activities take place at the Aleppo Shriners Auditorium on Fordham Road, the board shared the enthusiasm of seeing the event celebrated in the heart of Wilmington. Board members wish to acknowledge the many groups with the role in the success. The board extends a sincere wish to acknowledge the groups for the success, and they extend a sincere thank you to the town manager and his staff for obtaining the carnival vendor, to the police, fire, and public works departments for their efforts during the days of the events, and to members of the Fourth of July Committee for lending their experience in assisting the town through arranging for the fireworks, and also for working with the many local nonprofits who offered a variety of different foods during the celebration. It is with great pride that the Board of Selectmen voted at our November 14 meeting to proclaim Wilmington a Purple Heart community. Thanks to the tremendous efforts of our Director of Veteran Services, Louis Samoglia, and his department, Wilmington has offered significant support to its veterans over many years. Additionally, the board extends a warm thank you to Ms. Meredith Cipriani, who came forward offering to pay for three Purple Heart recipient parking signs to be located at prominent locations on town property. It is very fitting that in a community that holds such respect for its veterans, Wilmington would acknowledge those individuals who, in serving our country, earned the Purple Heart. In closing, I wish to extend the board's appreciation to each and every employee and volunteer who continue to serve the town of Wilmington. Local government is truly the level of government that is closest to the people. It is here in local government where the personal connections are made. It is here in local government where you, the stakeholders, have the greatest ability to influence the services that are offered. Each one of us as selectmen recognize that we have been elected by you to make decisions representative of your desires and to serve as good stewards of this community. Thank you for your vote of confidence. Respectfully submitted, Judith L. O'Connell, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, along and on behalf of my fellow colleagues. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just jump in here on this next item. So on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the other members of the Board of Selectmen, I wanted to place this on the agenda, which was recognition of you and your capacity as a selectman and most recently as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. You know, I can say, just from personal experience, having worked with you now for several years, I truly appreciate the professionalism that you've demonstrated and shown to me, the knowledge and the desire to really get the details and focus in on the details, not only in your capacity as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, but also working on the Yentile Committee. It's really been quite an honor and a privilege for me to work with you, and I wish you the best in your future outside of being on the board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm not sure what the, how this is going to roll here, and it's kind of weird for you to sort of run this portion of it. So I'm going to jump in, and I guess you guys can jump in, too, whenever you want. Now's probably the right time. I don't know if at the end of the meeting or now's, but I'm going to choose now. I wanted to articulate some thoughts as well. We've had the opportunity to work together for, I guess, six years that you've been on this board and gotten to know you quite well from before then and of course during that time. When you joined us on the Board of Selectmen in a very, very short period of time, I came to respect you quite, quite a bit. Your level of commitment, your focus, your, I want to say intensity, and I mean that in a positive manner. You never let any distraction keep you from the business of the day and the business of representing the people of Wilmington. And for that, you served as a model to me and I believe to all of us up here on this board. You're, you're a diplomatic person. You exhibit leadership and the ability to disagree. And I would, I don't have the specific case in point, but I know there have been a couple of cases over the course of those years that we may have voted differently on issues, but we never were disagreeable with each other. And I think that is how we, as members of this board, should be conducting ourselves. And I think that's what the expectation of the people of Wilmington is, is that we can deliberate and converse and, and challenge each other on issues, and at the end of the day, take our votes and leave as friends. And so you are most assuredly leaving as a friend. I want to wish you all the best in whatever the next chapter in your life is. I know that you're leaving us on the Board of Selectmen, but I, I hope that in some way you will be in service to the people of the town of Wilmington. And when that day comes and you need help to do so, I'll be there for you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Judy, let me just say, I really think you're a wonderful person. I really, truly mean that. I think we've had a lot of more, a lot more good moments than tough moments here, and I really mean that.
I think you're going to miss me the most.
I'm going to, I'm going to call, I'm going to make you, I'm going to call you on something you said at the Sons of Italy in about two minutes. No, but, no, but, no, but honestly, you know, if you do a little battle in here. But I can honestly say, when we're outside these four walls, you've always treated me with respect. You were kind to my son, Chris, and you've always acknowledged, if I was in, like we did the opium, we had the, on the Town Common, we had the music and we had the candlelight visual. You acknowledged I was in there. You never did not, you always acknowledged me. And at Yentile's Farm, I was there. You acknowledged me as well. And like I said, I mean, you know, in this arena, we can do battle, but I can honestly say, when we're outside these four walls, you treated me with respect. I thought I treated you with respect, and I thought you did a fantastic job when, at the Sons of Italy, when you were giving your speech. And I might take you up on it. You said at the end of the night, before the end of night, "I'm going to be on the dance floor with Mike McCoy." And nobody, the press didn't see you was there. But, you know, I'm telling you right now, if you want to go right there for five seconds for a quick Patrick Swayze, I'm there. All right? All right? You know, so, you know, and I really mean that, and I really wish all the best. And I'll tell you, we had, we had, believe it or not, we were at the, at the Sons of Italy, she's, at the Sons of Italy, she's sitting next to me, and we had great moments. We laughed and we joked, and I met your wonderful niece at Market Basket. She came up to me and said, "Are you selectman, Mike McCoy?" I go, "Yes, I am. I'm Judy O'Connell's niece." I go, "How are you?" I said, "You know something? Did you catch the last meeting, two meetings ago?" "No, your aunt is a wonderful person." She even wished you happy birthday out there. And we had a private moment, and we talked about it, you know. But outside the room, we can get along. And I think you've done a good job, Judy. I really mean that. You're a kind person, a nice person. And once again, outside these four walls, you always show respect to my, me, my wife, and my son, Chris. And that means a lot to me, and I do want to wish all the best.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I may be dating myself a little bit, but I was Judy's freshman softball coach. And the only problem is, is that she skipped the freshman level and just went right up to Varsity. So I never had the opportunity to coach her. But right from that Varsity level, boy, she just took off and excelled in her educational and athletic field and just right into the community in Wilmington and always helping and working hard for the residents and volunteering her time over the years. And it's been a great privilege and a pleasure to service her vice chair of the Yentile Farm Committee. And I can tell you that without her leadership, I'm sure that the success of that project would not be what it is today. She was just an outstanding leader. Her dedication, her professionalism just took the group over five years. And, and you can see now, today, with the, all the people that are there, participating in the Yentile Fields, it just is an amazing amount of work that she put into. And we're sure, we're surely going to miss her and everything that she's done. But she's not going too far. We're all going to make phone calls to her, I'm sure. So I just want to wish you the best in your next step.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm not going to make phone calls. I'm a serious person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the big deal here is, Senator. Judy's not going anywhere. So I think we all know that. But no, seriously, Judy, I want to thank you as well. You've been a constant professional. You've been hands-on, with everybody in the community knows you, knows that you'll be responsive. You're there when everybody's, anytime someone needs you. I mean, you're the definition of a volunteer. You, people like you are the reason that Wilmington is such a great place. I was lucky enough to grow up in the neighborhood down the street from you, and just from the time I was little, just, just knew the name Judy O'Connell. You just knew that good things were going to happen, whatever came after her name was listed. So I thank you for everything you've done. Again, you've been patient, and you've been a great listener for people, especially those who may be a young selectman trying to, you've set the bar pretty high for folks, myself included, and those who may come after us. And so really how to, how to dive right in and be thorough, and like I said, be a great listener to any resident who's ever had a problem. You've always addressed it. I hear great things. Every time I'm in the grocery store, people saying, "Oh, no, we're going to lose Judy." I said, "We ain't losing Judy. Judy's not going anywhere." Because if anybody knows Judy, if something's going on in this town, regardless if she's on this board or not, she's going to be the first to step up and help out. So I know that I'm confident that we'll meet again, and I look forward to working with you, and I really appreciate everything you've done for this community.
Thank you very much.
So I wish you well.
I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I could just offer one additional comment. I received a, an email this morning from a former colleague of yours on the board for a number of years, Michael Newhouse, and he asked that I specifically read into the record his, his comments. He states here, quote, "Specifically, I want to publicly acknowledge how hard you have worked over the past six years as a member of the board. Elected officials come and go, but your work ethic and level of commitment is unmatched. Thank you for your truly exemplary service," end quote.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
So on behalf of the board. So, on behalf of the board... Yeah, I don't know if it wants to do the honors here for anybody. So, on behalf of the board, we present you with this plaque, Judith O'Connell, in grateful recognition for your devoted service to the town of Wilmington as a member and past chairman of the Board of Selectmen 2011 to 2017.
Well, I have to say, you know, I, I'm overwhelmed by the whole experience. You guys all know that I can talk a lot, and the good news is, is that you don't have to listen to me after tonight. So, but obviously, you know, it's, when we set the agenda, this was on here, and I had said to Jeff as a chairman, "I'm kind of a little uncomfortable with having this on here, but I understand etiquette," and he, you know, was very passionate about wanting to do it and indicated that the board did as well. So, I appreciate that very much. And obviously, in being in public office for 10 years, I know some of my colleagues have been in, in office for longer, but you, you don't get here by accident. You have a tremendous amount of help from the people that you know and come in contact with, and it's just been an extraordinary experience. You know, to my fellow board members here tonight, I cannot express how grateful I am for your comments and your kind words. To Jeff as the town manager, we've had a very intricate relationship business-wise in terms of trying to carry out the business of the town, and I'd also like to acknowledge our former town manager, Michael Kyra, who I have a tremendous amount of respect and certainly has a legacy in this town that people have been talking about and will talk about for years to come. I'd also like to acknowledge D. Casey, who's here, who's the Assistant Town Manager, as well as all of the other department heads that I have had the pleasure of working with over the past six years in the Board of Selectmen capacity and previously as a school committee member. Certainly, we have very talented professionals that work here, in my opinion, and it's been a real honor to work with such qualified professionals, and I think the town of Wilmington, in my opinion, is very, very fortunate to have the employees that we do that actually make the town function every day. Certainly, there's another gentleman who's in the room, former selectman Louis Samoglia, who I'd also like to acknowledge, between this board, Michael Newhouse, I'd like to acknowledge who had indicated some kind words, and Lou, these are the representatives that I've had the pleasure of working with over the past six years, and I'll spend some time providing some comments on my own to them directly, so I don't want to elongate my comments because I do have some other people to thank. I'd also like to thank the administrative staff that we use every day at town hall. All that you see here in terms of paperwork happens because of the dedicated people that work for the leadership team, very specifically Jackie LaVerdi, Wendy Martinello, and, most importantly, our executive assistant, Bev Dalton, who has really gone above and beyond, and I've connected with Bev pretty much daily to talk about the day-to-day business of the town, and I have never seen someone more committed and more in love with their job and more dedicated to making sure that the town of Wilmington is moving in the right direction. So, I just want to thank you, Bev, for all that you've done for me and for this, this board. To the residents of Wilmington, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for people voting me into office, and I don't take this position for granted, not one single day, and I've really come into it with my heart, with not having an agenda and really wanting to pay it forward. I was fortunate to be born and raised in the town. I went through public schools K through 12 and came back here to live with my family, and I'm very grateful for the multiple generations that my parents, I've had the good sense to come to Wilmington and decide to raise my sister and I here and our extended family. So, I just want to thank the Wilmington residents very much for seeing fit to vote me into this position throughout various elections, and it really means the world to me. It's been a profound experience for me. I've grown so much as a person. I've learned so much about myself. I've been outside my comfort zone. I've had to really challenge my psychological furniture at times, depending on some of the triumphs and tribulations that I've had to go through in this position, and it's all volunteerism, and I wouldn't have it any other way. Obviously, to get to this point, you need to have a very strong family with you and beside you and a strong group of friends, and I'm, like many of you, who have amazing friends and family that have helped me throughout my life, and I'm very, very grateful. I have best friends, family friends, my parents, my siblings, but I'd like to acknowledge my parents, my grandmother, who's 90 this year, is watching at home, and also to, very specifically, my sister Shelley and my brother-in-law, David. I've had the good fortune, I've never really discussed my business endeavors, and I don't intend to tonight, but we just celebrated our 10th anniversary of our family business. In nine of those years, I was in public office. So, I really want to give a shout-out to my sister at home, who really handled the day-to-day operations of our business so that I could go off and volunteer and do other things. So, I at least wanted to acknowledge her publicly. And as fate would have it, I was not blessed with children of my own, so her kids have been really the inspiration, Colin and Maddie, who are young and in school, who have been really the big inspiration as to why I wanted to get back involved. And they're not just my kids. I look at all Wilmington kids as our kids, and I feel it's a social and a community responsibility to try and leave this place a little bit better than the way I found it, and hopefully, in some small way, I've made some sort of contribution back to the town that I've loved so much for years. And I would certainly like to also acknowledge one person who sat me down 10 years ago and said, you know, "You'd be really good, you know, at, at town government." And that's Mr. James Rooney, who passed away before I ever got into this seat, and it really is from him that I had the idea, or actually, the crazy idea perhaps in some people's eyes, to run for office. And he silently, from behind the scenes, took me and helped me make some key introductions and introduced me to some amazing people, who today I'm very proud to call my friends, and I consider them, in many ways, my family. And I'll always be grateful for him for, for sitting me down and, and inspiring me to, to give back. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you that are here tonight, those that are listening at home, to my fellow board members, to the manager, and to the town of Wilmington overall. It's been a great experience. I intend to not go anywhere, volunteer in any way that I can, and I, I don't believe that my political career is over, so you will see me at some point in the future. So, once again, thank you. All right, so the hard part's over, so let's move on to communications. Thank you.
Communications, the first item is a memo from me to the board regarding the Entile Farm Recreation Facility. I just wanted to recap what took place last week in terms of providing information about the soft opening at the Entile. So, effective last Monday, based upon conversations with Mike Woods, the Public Works Director, I determined that it was appropriate to open the turf field. I know the youth groups were really chomping at the bit to get out there, particularly with the good weather and the snow gone at that point. So, effective last Monday, the turf field was open. We also were permitting the use of the play areas, and as anyone who has been over there in the last week has seen, it has been heavily utilized. One of the areas that is open effective today is the basketball courts and the street hockey courts. That was, we just had some minor work to be done last week, but that's open effective today. And then the event lawn and the concession building will remain off limits until May 13th. In the case of the event lawn, we just want to hope to get that dried out, given all the wet weather we've had, where it is a new surface. We want to try to preserve that to the extent we can and give it some chance to build up a bit. And the concession building, there is some work that is going on there within the next few weeks, so that will be open with the May 13th open house. And in terms of the lighting, the lights will be on at the turf field and at the basketball courts through 10 o'clock each evening, and then the parking lot and the walkway, those lights will remain on from dusk to dawn.
I know, just to jump in here, I know that some of us, a lot of us have been down there watching what's been going on down there, just to kind of see how things have been received. It seems like it's being well-received. I know that I've forwarded on a couple of text messages to Jeff. I know a couple of people have reached out to me. Just from a communication standpoint and transparency, I've shared with Jeff any of the communications that I've received from people. Seems like parking is pretty available. I've seen it really busy during high-traffic times. We had a couple of chairs that were out on the turf field. I know Jeff is working on some communications to try and have that not continue. Just to talk out loud with you, Jeff, I know we have bleachers and we have people that are along the fence. Will there be people kind of checking in periodically as we start to see if, you know, maybe we need another bleacher set or see if the seating that we have is adequate or any sort of things that need to be tended to? I know some people, you know, picked up trash, and I know we're still working on signage for the carry-in, carry-out and all of that, but does anyone have any questions or comments of what you've observed that you haven't shared with me that you want to offer at this time? Yes.
Can I just make one quick comment? It was about 3:00 Sunday. I did take a quick walk around for about a half hour. People are having a blast. They love it. They've come, obviously, they know who we are, you know, and I got to say, the Entiles Committee did a great job in putting it together, and we have to really thank the voters who funded this at the town meeting. But everyone's having a wonderful time. They're having a little bit of a picnic. You know, you are right, you did see some folks sitting out there, you know, what relative to was the girls' field hockey team between Wilmington and, I believe, Lexington, but they're all having a good time. I mean, I'm out of a job. I told a few people, "I wouldn't mind flipping some pizzas in the concession stand if you really need me," but, you know, so, but it looks beautiful, and I think the town, and you did a, I got to say, you did a great job as the leader in that. You did a great job. It looks beautiful, and it's really, really nice. Everyone loves it. Thank you.
I haven't had any direct communications, so no one's texted me directly or anything. I'm, I'm pretty available on social media through Facebook and Twitter and stuff, and so I've just sort of been monitoring it informally, and what I've seen has been largely positive. In fact, frankly, I really haven't seen any negative, except for the, some folks complain about the carry-in, carry-out policy, but I think we experienced that challenge with the dog park, and I think it's just a, it's a training exercise, for lack of a better word, and I think that will, will sort of wear itself in. But other than that, I feel like most of the dialogue that's going on has been largely positive, so that's a good start, I would say. That's, that's at least the vibe that I'm getting.
Okay. Anything over here?
I'm a little concerned with the lawn chairs that I've heard about out on the turf field. You know, you put those lawn chairs out there on the turf field, they're like a spike, and they can ruin the field, and I just don't understand why the parents felt the need to bring them on there when the rule clearly states only coaches, players, and officials. And I think that the Recreation Director should be notified that she needs to have a conversation with the directors of these various organizations, youth groups that are, the lacrosse and the soccer and whoever else uses that field, to instruct their coaches where if they see lawn chairs on the field, they need to be removed. You know, we spent, this is a four-plus-million-dollar project, and to have one lawn chair rip into that turf field and ruin the whole thing, I'm sure that they'll be upset, and they'll probably be upset at, at the town officials and not themselves for, for ripping the field. So, I'm hoping that something be said to the directors of those organizations that common sense tells you, there stands behind, go sit in the stands, because a lot of those people, as we all know as parents, when we used to watch our kids play, we'd bring a lawn chair, and then we'd bring a, a drink or a cup of coffee, and that's not to be on the field either. So, I want to really stress that point, and it should be stressed to Karen Campbell, the director, to make that known to, to those youth groups, that that is a definite no, or they're going to, they should lose their right to, to play there.
And just to, as an FYI, I did have a conversation with Karen Campbell, the Recreation Director, this morning. We spoke specifically about that, and she will be having conversations with the individuals that are in charge of the various youth groups to make it clear that, you know, unlike the the natural turf fields where, you know, that may, certainly is permissible, the specific instruction here is that the parents and spectators must remain behind the fenced area. There are the bleachers, and certainly, people can stand along the fence, but the, only the coaches and players should be inside, so that'll be clear.
And then one last thing in regards to the opening. Will there be trash receptacles there for, for just the opening of the event?
Yes.
Okay, even though it's going to be a carry-in, carry-out?
Yes, for that particular event, we will have trash receptacles.
Then one last question might be, what do you deem the restroom policy to be? Can you just remind us and the public? Will they be open only during use of the pavilion, or are they going to be open during certain hours? Post-opening.
So, they, they clearly will be open during the, obviously, the games and events that are going on at the field. And in terms of, I believe, but I'm going to have to confirm this, because I know we've talked about it, I believe there will be limited times outside of the games where they will be opened, but I would have to check on the times. I know we talked about that. I just don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, fair enough. Anything else?
Can I just chime in real quickly on what Kevin was talking about, about that the coaches and the parents really need to be communicated to by the administrators of the respective leagues and, I guess, from the rec department? So, I think that's clear, and, and I'm glad that that has been going on and will continue. But if it hasn't been stated, I think it ought to be, that they have the responsibility also of communicating to the opposing teams who are visiting, who are coming in, right? So, there's common sense, and we can get the message out to our own teams, hey, respect our fields, but it's the visiting teams that come in who may not understand what the messaging is. It's our folks that have to really go to the, the visiting coaches and visiting parents and say, "Please, you know, these are, these are the rules of our facility here. Please respect them." Certainly, we would be expected to, to respect their rules on their fields when we go. So, I just, I don't want to have that, that gap in communication between just our folks and the visiting folks. That's all.
That's a valid point. The one last thing I would say is that I know that the signage, and forgive me, I don't remember exactly everything that's on it, but if it does, you know, other turf fields, or what does the high school have? Does it specifically say on their signage, "No lawn chairs" on there? Or does it have any sort of verbiage relative to seating on the turf carpet?
I do not believe that the signage at the high school field has that specific verbiage. I mean, one of the challenges, and we talked about this, or I talked a little bit about it with Karen this morning, is the balance between, you know, trying to communicate the general premise that these are the requirements without oversigning.
Right, exactly. Okay. All right, well, I think with anything new, it's a work in progress, and I think the key is just to keep the lines of communication open and, you know, eyes and ears. I mean, obviously, you know, we're all excited about it being open, and, you know, if you get feedback, I would just encourage you to continue to present it back to Jeff so that we can, you know, work through any issues in a timely fashion. Yes?
If I may, just I have a couple of questions for Jeff. Before that, obviously, like my colleagues, went down Sunday with my wife and our daughter, just had an awesome time. We walked around. She was in the stroller. She loved, she slept through the whole thing, so I think she liked the park, but really proud to bring her down there, seven weeks old, and hopefully, she'll have, she'll get to enjoy it a lot longer than I will. But awesome, amazing to see all the kids packed on the playgrounds, the games going on, the practices on the field. People were really pleasant. I mean, everybody seemed to be really upbeat. Obviously, the weather's turning, so that's great, but the park is just beautiful. In fact, we were looping around the turf, and there was like a Dunkin' Donuts bag on the ground, and before I could even walk over to pick it up, another woman went and grabbed it, put it in her purse to take home. So, appreciate whoever that was, and, you know, everybody's doing their part to try to keep it clean. With that, I do have a couple of questions about the signage. Jeff, can we expect the signage before the grand opening, or is it going to be?
Yes.
And, and is there going to be signage at the turf field? As you enter the turf field, at the actual part of the field, there's some rules about the turf?
Right. Well, there, there currently is at each of the entrances, so there's four points of access in each of those locations has signage. In fact, I was over there Saturday and walked the area, and it does talk about, you know, this, in general sense, it doesn't list everything that you can't do, but it covers the intent, which is, you know, the certain type of cleats to be worn and, and so on. So, that, that already exists. There will be...
Additional signage going to be?
There is additional signage in the park itself. There has not been contemplated additional signage on the fence or around the field, but certainly, if we, if it turns out that, you know, we need that, we can, we can add that.
Okay. And in terms of the rental of the field, the, the field there, the turf field... And in terms of the rental of the field, the field there, the turf field, Kevin alluded to. So can you walk me through the procedure? So if I'm a youth organization, I want to rent that facility, that field for practice, for game? Is it, and when they go down, whether it's, I believe it's online, right? You can do this now?
Yes.
Do they get some type of email receipt with the rules and the regulations?
Yes.
So they do get that?
Yes.
So it's provided? Okay, that's great. And then lastly, I'm hoping this is something we can talk about in the future as a board. But I'd like to bring it up here tonight. You know, we've mentioned just in the last 10 minutes, a few things that maybe tweaks that might need to be made. Judy mentioned astutely that perhaps we might need more bleachers going forward, maybe more signage, maybe find a way to have the bathrooms open a little more often. It's my understanding that the project is still under budget. And I'd like to discuss at a future date, the board, perhaps that that money stay in that account for a while until we can figure out. The park's only open a few days. We might have to work some things out. And if there's something needs to be changed that we could, before that goes back into free cash, I think we should, you know, wait some time. And if it's, I don't know the exact procedure on that, the legalities of it, if that money can stay in that account. I believe there's a Yentl account, right? Where the money is still sitting. I'd like to see it stay there personally until we can get through the first couple weeks, months, just to see how things go. I mean, the committee's done an unbelievable job of making the park absolutely beautiful. But there's just some things you can't foresee. So I don't know if, I don't want to limit ourselves and have to go back to the taxpayers looking for more money. If a couple of weeks down the line, we see that, oh, we, I wish we would have done that. And again, I don't want to come off as I'm knocking, I think it's an absolutely outstanding facility. It's going to be like that for years. And I just want to make sure we can keep it that way.
I have had conversations with the town accountant about holding that unexpendable balance. So that would be the plan, to keep that available, as you say, in the event that two or three months down the line, there's something that we identify that is, was unforeseen.
Is that something you want? Does the board need a vote on? Is that the committee's and their purview? Is that something?
Well, we were going to do it as a matter of course. So I don't know that there's a vote necessary. You know, what I can do is, at the point where we are looking to, you know, have the money go into the general fund, you know, prior to that, I can advise you if that, if we, you know, three months or six months out, we're looking to do that. As a matter of course, you know, eventually, the project will have to be closed out. But I would just advise the board in advance that if that was the intent.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, moving on to the next memo regarding substance abuse.
The substance abuse RFP, as you know, there was a request for proposal prepared to bring onboard a consultant, behavioral health consultant, to work with us in dealing with the substance abuse issue. It was, the RFP was posted in a number of venues. Unfortunately, as of the deadline, which was March 30th, we did not receive any proposals in spite of early expectations that there were perhaps a couple of vendors that were interested. So at this point, we really need to reassess our game plan here. I know I've had multiple conversations with the police chief about this. One of the attempts is, and he's unfortunately been unsuccessful to this point in terms of obtaining feedback from the vendors that had expressed interest early on. But we'd like to get a sense from them as to what changed their mind. We've also, through the substance abuse coalition, are reaching out to other potential vendors that might be interested. And essentially, we'll need to determine whether it's appropriate to reissue the RFP in its current form, or perhaps modify it. The other option that quite frankly, we're looking at is the prospect of creating a position, substance abuse coordinator. So all of those things are in the mix. I'm looking to make a decision as to whether to reissue the RFP or go in another direction by or before the end of the month.
Well, thank you very much for this. I know it's been brought up by Slakman-Bendel. I think we've all touched upon it at various times. You know, obviously, I'm departing here this evening. But I just, I can't stress enough how important this is. I know that we're all anxiously, you know, looking to fill this position. And I know that you and the chief are working well together to try and do that. You know, I can't tell, I know you indicated that you didn't get a lot of feedback. But I'm wondering if it's that there's so much demand out there because it's such a pervasive issue? Or if it's the fact that it's a contract position versus something that's full-time? Do you have any read on that or any sort of sense? I understand that you wanted to kind of try it out and see how things go so you can tweak the program based on the needs because it's something new. But what are other communities doing, you know, or any other? I know when I went to the MMA conference, for example, I sat in the opioid breakout session. And the Taunton Police Department and the City of Lowell Police Department, they were the two speakers. And they were talking best practices about substance abuse programs that they've done. So I'm wondering, in addition to your efforts with the chief, if there's any way that we can reach out to town managers across the Commonwealth that are in our area geographically to see what they're doing to address the substance abuse issue, you know, from a community perspective? I know we're working on the Wilmington Public Schools factor. But I have to believe that we're not the first and only community out trying to do this.
Right. There are a number of my colleagues that I have connected with. And it seems in the community, in the communities that I've connected with, that they have hired individuals as opposed to go on the route of a consultant. Although, as I understand it, and I think the chief is here, he may be able to offer some additional comment. But as I understand it, there was, there's a regional effort also. I think it involves Tewksbury, Lowell, Drakeett, maybe Chelmsford. So there's, you know, been a combination of, you know, efforts tried. And I would say, quite honestly, I don't know that there is any one silver bullet, so to speak, that is going to address this. You know, we certainly, on the one hand, I really want to use the funds wisely and make sure we get, you know, achieve some kind of an impact for investing that money in whether it's a consultant or an employee. You know, one of the reasons why I was going the route of consulting services is by engaging a consultant, there's the opportunity to get a breadth of experience, not only from the representative who is, you're dealing with day-to-day, but the folks that stand behind them. And also, it creates some flexibility so that if it turns out, you know, three months, six months into the program, you decide to alter the direction a little bit or alter the focus, you're able to do that more adeptly with a consulting behavioral health firm as opposed to an individual. You know, with an individual, you're obviously hoping to get a certain set of skills that are going to allow that person to have an impact. But it perhaps may be a little more difficult to change course. So, but with all that being said, you know, if there, if the firms that are out there are not prepared to offer this kind of service, then we have to change course.
Sure. Any questions or comments here? And Chief Begonis, I know that you're here in the audience. I don't want to spot you. But I didn't know if you had any comments that you wanted to share with the board? Or has Jeff covered it?
I think the manager's covered it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, appreciate Jeff putting this, and yourself putting this on the agenda. I know I asked for it last week. Obviously, something that's really important to everybody up here and those in the community. I'd like to propose that, you know, I appreciate the manager's approach, going out and looking for some type of services. But we didn't get the bottom line, we didn't get any reaction from that. We didn't get any bids. So I think it's, you know, I don't want to wait till the end of April. I think we ought to move in a direction, look for a full-time position. I mean, I know in my research, I've looked, seen places like Tewksbury and Chelmsford, those that work together. It's my understanding that they have a counselor coming to your town maybe one night a week for a few hours. Well, the families that are dealing with this addiction, I don't know if the particular night of the week is going to fit their needs. I mean, we all know, we can't gauge this on those who have overdosed, unfortunately. There's also people who are battling addiction every day right now, who haven't overdosed, thank God. But it's not just the person that's dealing with the addiction, it's their family. And if we can get somebody in a position like that, they can reach out to the families and maybe offer them services. I'm not suggesting that they're going to wave a magic wand and have a solution to the opiate crisis. But if they can provide a little bit of healing or direction for families who are struggling. You know, I have a new daughter. If she came home one day in a few years from now and had an addiction, I wouldn't even know where to turn. But if the town had somebody that families could go to, I think it would be money well spent. The taxpayers have already approved the money last year. It's in the budget for this year. We have the money. I think we should go forward with it full-time. I know our police department's working extra hard on this, particularly the detectives who are right now on the front lines of this. I appreciate that. But I think we need to find, you know, this is really important. I think everybody agrees. I'd like to not wait any longer. I'd like to see some action on this. And I would, I would make, I'd be willing to make a motion if it's so appropriate tonight that we move in that direction immediately.
Are you submitting that as a motion? Or do you have?
Well, continue discussion if anybody else wants to offer. But I'm prepared to if I need to.
I'm happy to make a second to the discussion. I'm willing to do that.
Just a question on the RFP. Would the RFP be targeted to hospitals and counseling services? Or was it just sent out in general as an advertisement?
Well, it was, there were two particular entities that we were aware of that were interested. In fact, one of them had expressed interest early on when this was first brought forward. So copies were sent specifically to these two entities. And then beyond that, it was advertised on the town's website. There's a site, COMBI, which is a state procurement website that goes out or is available to entities across the state, as well as, you know, being posted locally. So.
So it wasn't really sent out, other than to just two specific places? I mean, if it, if, it should have been sent out probably to more people in that program, the hospitals and counseling, I would imagine, and you might get more of a response that way. Especially, and it's interesting to hear that there are some communities out there that are regionalizing. And I know you mentioned that they only meet once, once a night. But if we went the regional route and we partnered up with a few communities, I'm sure that with the finances that we have appropriated, along with the other communities, we could look into, into that avenue as well. But I think if you went back out with the RFP, I think you should really target more counseling programs, groups, in hospitals.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I second it for the courtesy that way we could talk about it. But I'd like to hear more from the town manager before even taking a vote like that. I mean, I think if maybe if you put off on it, I know we're going to go to the town meeting floor. I'd like to get more feedback from the manager, what he's going to recommend. I mean, he is our chief fiscal officer. And like you said, there might be a joint venture with a couple of communities in doing something and expanding, you know, maybe within the Merrimack Valley area. We have part of that area, you know? That's my two cents.
I appreciate that. But as I said at the beginning of my statement, you know, I would like to perhaps put this on the agenda if it's appropriate for a further meeting. We can discuss it. The manager can provide more information. But the bottom line is, you know, I'd hate to see another day, another week, another month go by without us talking about this and really trying to have a full court press. Mr. Kyra brings up a good suggestion to reach out to some specific groups, see if we can find somebody. But, I mean, the taxpayers already approved this. You know, I hate to see the money just sit there when people are suffering.
Judy?
Yes.
I don't want to create busy work, Jeff, for you or for anybody here. I know you have full agendas every day. But I echo Mr. Bendel's sentiments here. I think we need to start moving full throttle and headlong towards building a job description and being prepared. If, if it pans out that the hiring a consultant is the wrong approach for any number of different reasons, maybe there just aren't consultants available, or they're not interested in it, in the position or the role that we have in mind, I don't want us to then go, ah, I guess we got to put together a job description. I really would like to see those two things happening on the same trail. What I mean by that is, if the decision on April, you know, the last month, the last day of this month, is that we think we're going to abandon this idea of hiring a contractor, on the 1st of May, I'd like to have a job, a job description already prepared and have that position listed so that we can begin the hiring process, you know, immediately, rather than taking another month to start working on what's the language of that job description. So I don't know how you go about doing that, Jeff. And again, I'm sensitive to, you know, putting more stuff on your desk already. I don't know if Dee is able to help in that regard or, and what I also wanted to say is what something Judy said is, the Mass Municipal Association is well-tooled in this area, as you know, from having attended some meetings there. So if you haven't already, and I suspect you have, but perhaps it's worth a reach out to Mr. Beckwith at the MMA and his staff to really glean from them what are the best practices that are being applied by similar towns as Wilmington in this area. Because I know you have some interaction and communication with your counterparts. But you probably have some limitations as to the number and the breadth of those communications. And the MMA has a much more expansive knowledge. So, you know, if we can have, that's what I would like to see happen. I'm patient to let April go by. But let's have that job description ready if we're going to, if we're going to need it. And let's see what the MMA has to say. That's my position on the issue.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may. Thank you, Mr. Shapu. And to your point, I think I would, I would agree with you. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a task force already in place made up of other town administrators?
Yes.
And so perhaps that's something that could be brought, I would yield to their expertise. You know, people like Shelley Newhouse and Lou Simaglia know much more about this, and certainly the police chief, than I do. I would yield to their expertise because I mentioned the police department. You know, also Lou and Joe are on the front lines of this every day, too, dealing with people who are faced with addiction. So perhaps they could be involved if they so choose.
So perhaps I could offer a suggestion, if you're open to it, is that obviously, there's a motion, there's a second for discussion. If we were to take a vote, we can do that. Or you also have the option to withdraw your motion so that it doesn't go to a vote. If, in doing so, and I'm not suggesting that you do that, you could, we could decide as a board that we want to put this on the subsequent agenda for the April meeting. Obviously, I won't be the chair at that time, but the chair that's going to be in that, in that position. I would suggest we probably make that decision now because you're going to be electing that chair that evening. So the agenda will have already been set. That you give the manager, in my opinion, I understand you wanting to move on it, and I'd be prepared to support that motion tonight. But I think hiring personnel, you know, on the spot, which I know we've been discussing it, and I think what I'm hearing from you is that you want results now and not 30 days from now and not 60 days from now, and that it's kind of gone on longer than we would like to see. That would be what I would suggest. And you can always reintroduce your motion on the 24th. You can always reintroduce your motion the first meeting in May. And then it would give a compromising situation where it would give the manager to double back with his personnel and staff and do some of that research that we've talked about. And you can have, you can put it on a board to discussion item for the next agenda. And you can always bring that motion back up. So I'm not trying to sway your decision on it. But it would give opportunity to look at the total comp statement and make sure that, you know, is $80,000, for example, what a counselor in this capacity gets paid? What is the industry standard prevailing wage for that position? What if that salary amount isn't enough to support that position? And then we're marketing for someone that we don't have enough money to pay, or perhaps we're overpaying? So I think maybe if you, my suggestion would be that there's a more comprehensive proposal that talks about hiring somebody full-time, a regional option, and/or some other alternative, and you really roll up your sleeves as a board and look at it publicly.
No, I appreciate that and I appreciate the discussion. I don't, certainly don't want to just keep the motion out there just because I put it out there, stroke my own ego. I want to make sure we do what's best for the community. So I will withdraw it, but I, you know, and I'm hoping that we can address this as soon as our next meeting. I'm sorry, you won't be there, Judy, because I think you would be helpful with that. But as you usually, but I'm hoping that we can move on this. Again, I don't fault the manager. It's not your fault, no one bid on it. But I'm hoping we can take a more aggressive approach and let's find a way. I want to obviously give the manager some time to reach out to those who are, have much more knowledge on this than I do, such as the police chief and Mr. Simaglia, so.
And I don't want, I don't want to be swaying you. It's just I don't want to vote against something that I truly want to vote for because of the information, and I don't know that any of my, that other colleagues would want to either because.
I don't doubt that any.
Wouldn't send the right message that, you know, voting against something where I truly want to support it, and I think we all do.
Sure. I don't doubt that any of the folks up here don't support it, but I want to make sure we go about it the right way. So I appreciate that suggestion, and I will withdraw this particular motion.
Okay. So we can commit to having it on the next agenda?
Yes. It would be on the next agenda.
Just another quick question. So will you be resubmitting a, an RFP and hitting targeted resources with that? Because the RFP, I'm sure, as Mr. Shapu said, wanting to create a job description, the RFP must have some sort of an outline of a job description.
Yes, it has a scope of services.
I mean, you already have a job description, so to speak.
Right.
With that proposal, so that's there for you. So would you be sending this out again and now targeting more counseling programs, more hospitals and places of that nature that can?
Well, I think ultimately, and I'll, I need to have a conversation internally, but, you know, if we go the route of a second request, issuing a second request for proposal, you know, typically we, as was the case in this last instance, we allowed, I believe it was either three or four weeks for responses to come in. You have to give a reasonable amount of time for folks to review the proposal, the RFP, and then develop a proposal. So before I go that route, I want to, you know, I guess what I want to avoid is going that route and then four weeks down the line or three weeks down the line coming up empty again. So I think we need to internally have a conversation about whether it makes sense to do that again, whether the scope of work needs to be tweaked in some manner to make it more desirable for entities to participate. You know, we, we would need to identify particular vendors or hospitals. I don't think every hospital in the area necessarily has a behavioral health program that would be inclined to, well, they may not have behavioral health as a major part of their operation to begin with, or if they do, they may not be inclined to respond to it. So I think, you know, as much as it would be advantageous to send out an RFP to every hospital in the area, that may not be advisable either. So we need to really identify who are the entities out there that might be inclined to do this. As I say, we were able to identify two in the past, one of whom expressed interest, but, you know, if we identify others that are inclined to participate and perhaps even, you know, try to get some indication from them beforehand, if they are interested, then that it may make sense to go that route. If we're not able to come up with a list of potential vendors, then we may have to go the route of an employee. I mean, you know, obviously there are pros and cons to each. I think, you know, obviously hiring personnel is something that I really take, you know, I give some measure of pause to because there's, along with the salary, there's all kinds of other costs that we assume, everything from, you know, the health insurance and benefits and all that other costs. So it, we just need to be mindful of what we're getting into.
Anything further on this?
So by the 24th, you'll have a, an actionable plan? Is that reasonable to say?
Yes. So by the 24th, we will, we will be prepared to come back to the board with a game plan, either have a job description prepared and ready to go out, or if we're able to identify that in fact there are viable firms that may, that would submit a proposal and we'll go that route.
I think, I don't want to overstate it. I think it's clear that there's a priority here. So I hope, you know, hope that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we okay? Anything else? All right. Thank you. All right.
Next is just a memo to the board from me advising the members that Edward H., Edward Hill Jr., the petitioner on annual town meeting warrant, Article 53, has withdrawn that article. You may recall that that article, he was seeking to purchase town-owned property on 16 St. Paul Street. The article's been withdrawn. Next is a memo to the board seeking to clarify the budget request for tasers. It was brought to my attention that there may be some question with regard to our efforts to purchase tasers. You may recall that at the last town meeting in 2016, there was a request that was authorized for $32,500. At that time, in going through the fiscal '17 budget process, the police chief recommended to me that we spend $65,000 for the purchase of tasers. It would just remind people, because I think it's important to note, that when the budget is developed, in that case, a lot of the information was garnered in the fall of 2015 and then brought forward to me in December of 15, and ultimately was put into the budget that was presented to the board in January of 16. The expectation was that we would purchase these tasers in one-shot deal based upon the information that was available at the time. I had suggested to the chief that I would prefer, instead of paying $65,000, pursuing $65,000 in the fiscal '17 budget, that we should break it up and do $32,005 in 16, or 17, rather, fiscal '17 and $32,005 in 18. So that is what was done. We presented the $32,005 last year, which was accepted. I would just point out that this is really, the intent here is to provide an option, a less lethal option when officers are called upon to address highly volatile situations, as was the case back in 2015 over at the MBTA station. We fast forward to December, January of 2016, 17. The expectation was that we would seek another $32,005. You know, this, the information that was provided to the police department, I think some of it was inaccurate at the time. The representative that was, that the police department was dealing with, as I understand it, is no longer with the firm. But long and the short of it was, when, when this was brought to the finance committee and actually following, following up on some questions that were raised by the finance committee, this TAP program, TASER Assurance Program, became known to, to us, and we believe that it provides a better option than simply buying, spending $65,000 to spend on purchasing tasers outright. This option allows us to, for $118,000 to fund the program over multiple years. It also guarantees that at the end of five years, which is the expected useful life of these tasers, we would be able to replace those tasers with new tasers at no additional cost. So instead of spending $65,000 now and buying, you know, these units and then having to spend another 65 or whatever the number is five years from now, the plan is to, to go the route of a multi-year purchase on, on the tasers. So if the appropriation is authorized this year, we would have $65,000. The expectation would be that we would enter into a contract with TASER, which is the manufacturer of these units. And my plan would be, in the subsequent year, fiscal '19, to request the additional $53,000 and then fully pay for that TASER program.
So I had asked Jeff to put this memo together. Obviously, it's gone through. We had the warrant that was open and closed here. We had the $32,005 and we had the previous $32,005. And it's nothing to do with the police department proposal or the merits of the proposal, but when we had closed the warrant, for me personally, I wasn't aware of the TAP program and the larger number of the 118 and change. So I know respectfully, some of my fellow board members were not able to attend that joint meeting. So I didn't want, I wanted to make sure that this board was in the know of what that program is and what the total dollar value is, and that in essence, the $32,005 that's going to be part of the town meeting warrant article that one of you was going to be reading, that it's a part to a whole, and that in essence, we're going to need a future appropriation for the remaining dollars. So I wanted to make sure that you have the benefit of that information now and that the public has the benefit of that information so that you know specifically what you're presenting and specifically what the community is voting on. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. May I ask a question?
Sure.
So about the funding of these tasers, if the 32, $32,000 in this town?
$32,005.
$32,005 is approved, will we enter into contract with TASER right away and then just will make good with them with the balance of the money due in fiscal 2019, but start the process of acquiring the equipment soon? Now?
So, yes. Following the town meeting, we would enter into a contract. You know, we, the money that is appropriated at the April 29, 2017 town meeting cannot be expended until fiscal '18, which is July, you know, July 1 and beyond. So we can enter into an arrangement following town meeting, but the actual expenditure would be made in July. And then that would, we would plan to make payment on the balance in the subsequent year. That would be my recommendation. The program that they offer, you can have up to five years to make the payment, but from my perspective, you know, it makes sense to just make that second payment in fiscal '19 and be done with it.
But just as one follow-up. So if I understood what you said correctly, the total expenditure of 100 and, forgive me, 118 and change, 118,000.
Yes.
While larger than what we had originally expected, ends up potentially being a cost saving over time by virtue of the fact that if we bought the tasers outright, they would, they have a life expectancy or a life expiration, as it were, that would require us to purchase them again in some five or some period of time inside of a, like a 10-year window? Is that, so in other words, if they cost $60,000 to buy them outright, and then we have to buy them again in five or so years, it would cost us another $60,000. Is that, am I wrapping it up reasonably?
Essentially, there's, I can't say that it's a hard and fast rule that they'll die after five years, but the, from what we're being told, the industry standard is that they last for about five years. One of the other virtues of this TAP program is that we have a five-year warranty. So if we simply purchase them outright for $65,000, there's a one-year warranty, and then once after that year, to the extent that there's any issues with them, that it's on our dime. So, you know, that becomes another feature of the plan that is advantageous.
It's a big number, but I guess what I'm getting at is, for me, I'd much rather have our gentlemen and ladies equipped with equipment that I know is going to work when it's time for them to use it. And so I don't want to be, how do you say this? I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. Is that, am I saying that right? In other words, I don't want to try to cut corners on, on the overall expenditure and then ultimately put us in a harmful situation. So to me, even though the, the dollars are greater, it's, I think it makes more sense for the town over the long haul. So I appreciate the detail of it because I wasn't clear on it even at the joint meeting of the planning board and finance committee. So this was helpful for me to understand it and this conversation as well.
Yeah, there was some confusion at that meeting in the presentation that was, that was given, as far as I'm concerned, and to have this come to us after was quite surprising. I too want to make sure that the police and the fire and the DPW are equipped and get the proper equipment that they need. But, so with the first $32,005, when, when the chief had said that they were going to purchase tasers, there were no tasers purchased. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And you're intending to enter into a contract after this year's town meeting without the appropriation of another $54,000, $53,000?
It would be a multi-year contract. I mean, we enter into multi-year contracts.
How can you enter into a contract without having the appropriations? Because if we're going to have another $32,005 at this particular town meeting approved, and then you're going to enter into a contract, who's to say that the next town meeting will stop that $54,000 appropriation? I mean, personally, I think it's a little hefty to buy 51 tasers. How many, how many patrolmen are out at any given time on their various shifts? Is it 10, six?
Well, it depends upon the day shift. I mean, Chief, you want to answer that? I mean, it's, all depends upon what shift.
Yeah, the day shift probably has between 12 and 15, sometimes more, Monday through Friday. Weekends would be less, but we do deploy in large-scale situations like the Fourth of July. You not only deploy a heavy shift, but it's all hands. Nobody's on vacation. We tell you the department's working that day. There are concerns with the shelf life of a TASER when you're swapping it out regularly as well, because each time, they have to be tested before and after your shift. So over the shelf life of them, it's drastically reduced. In our research, speaking with other police departments, which we did quite extensively, any department that did a shift deployment didn't like it and wanted to go through the full issue. Same situations, you take better care of equipment that you're personally responsible for, rather than stuff that just gets taken off and put on a shelf and the next person comes in and takes it. Not to say that the officers beat up equipment, but we do that with our radar guns that we have, and they take a severe beating and they go in and out. But this year, it just felt, when we looked at it, it was a better program for us at any given time. Out of that 12 to 15 police officers that are on the street, you could have another six detail officers out on the street as well. So, you know, to wait for it to deploy to come to you, we had that experience at the train station with that individual that was wielding a knife, trying to stab folks, injured two officers. It was, it was a while to get the tasers from another town, and they were on shift as well. So, I mean, just for the next town over, to get over there. So, you know, you only need them when you need them, and I think that that's the critical aspect.
Yeah, well, I'm not opposed to getting tasers, Chief, but I, I really hope that the, that the equipment that is used from time to time is taken care of and not just thrown on a shelf. I didn't really like the, the description of what you said, because I hope they take care of the cruisers as well. But to get 51 tasers seems a little excessive to me, and to appropriate another $54,000 just doesn't make sense. You know, it also says in here in the last paragraph that the next 10 years, it says here, the TAP option provides the department and the town with a guarantee that offices will have access to less lethal tools over the next 10 years for a price, for a known price. What's the known price? You know, if we're spending $118,000, how much more is there? I just think that providing 51 tasers is excessive. Entering into a contract without the appropriation first, I don't think that that makes sense at all.
Well, just to be clear, first of all, we don't, you know, each officer is assigned a gun. We don't phase those, you know, we don't swap those out at the end of a shift. 10 years ago, the prior town manager entered into a lease agreement for 10 years for the, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was the dispatch system. We didn't have a full appropriation at that town meeting to pay for the full freight, but every year during the course of the 10 years, there was an appropriation to pay a portion of that lease. So this multi-year option of paying for something over time is, is something that the town has done in the past.
Yeah, I probably would have been opposed to it 10 years ago if they, if they did it that way as well. that way as well.
Yes.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I could say, you know, I can honestly say I do support the town manager's TASER program. I mean, I know there's so many people work a shift and we have 30-plus police officers, but when a police officer is off duty, they're really on duty and I would want him equipped at all times because if he's at a mall somewhere and something happens, he's got the equipment and it could be non-lethal, or if he has to use lethal force, I don't have an issue with it depending on the situation. So I think we should just outfit the fight department, the police department and what they need because they're always on call, they're always on duty, even if they're not punched in and getting a paycheck on a couple, few hours or whatever, eight-hour shift, you know, they're there. And I think, you know, you're right. I think we need to equip everybody, you just don't, yeah, here's my TASER, give it to the second shift and the second shift gives it to the third. They're out there all the time and I would love to see them have that all the time.
Well, that's what they do with police cars, though. They, they, they don't take them all home. There's not 51 police vehicles. They pass them on to the next person. You could have the police vehicles with the tasers in them. What you're saying is that the police officers are going to walk around off-duty with tasers and guns?
I don't know.
I mean, you know, I think that they'd use them, you know, when they're on duty.
Kind of happy when there's an off-duty police officer in a mall and someone's trying to do something and the officer kills that individual because that person was going to cause may or may not to people in the mall. You know, I have no issue with that at all. But, you know, that's, you know, if I was in a mall and something like that happened, I'd be very happy that a police officer off-duty was able to take care of that situation and my kid's still alive.
Just one other question regarding, the expense for the tasers is the tasers, but it also includes the cartridges, some of the practicing that needs to be done.
That's right.
On the renewal with getting the new tasers, I know it's my understanding from the presentation, I believe Deputy Chief Richter had indicated that each TASER takes two cartridges, if my memory serves me correctly.
Yes.
So if you were to, to get new devices in five years, does that include the accessories? Would you have to purchase a new set of accessories at that time to roll with the new technologies? Is it just the TASER renewal for the device itself and there would be an additional cost for the accessories to go with it? Or is that the total bundle of what we need for the next phase?
So it would be replacement of all the tasers that were purchased in the first round. And Chief, can you address the issue about whether the cartridges, I believe the cartridges are part of that replacement? Is that correct?
No, the tasers would be, sir.
Just the?
The cartridges would be expended over the course of a year because every officer is required to fire two live rounds.
Okay.
And also two training rounds.
Okay.
So what we have purchased, you'd be rolling those over. It costs about 6,000 per year.
Okay. So you have to revisit that part of it. Okay.
Is that, Madam Chair, that's my question with the last paragraph. It says for a price, for a known price for the coverage of the services and the replacement in electronic controlled weapons. What's the price?
Well, the price is the price for the TASER units. So the, if we go with the, this TAP program, we know that we're going to be spending 118,000 dollars to include the 51 tasers and in this case, for the first round, a number of the cartridge units and holsters. And we also know that in five years, when those tasers have to be changed out, that we will receive another 51 tasers at that point. If we simply buy, spent 65,000 and buy 51 tasers and cartridges today, in five years, those TASER units may be, I don't know what the price of the tasers will be.
Well, they might be less because you'd have other companies that might be in the business at the time with more competition. We don't know.
It's possible, sure.
But still, the question is, is what is the known price that the taxpayers are going to have to pay? It's not been answered yet.
Well, the known price is the 118,080.
Again, that's not what your paragraph at the end says. I mean, the known price for the, for the replacement of the electronic weapons and that malfunction.
Well, it's no different than guns. I mean, we don't know from year to year how many bullets we're going to buy.
I'm only asking, Jeff, because it says a known price.
Yes, and I'm telling you that the known price.
You must know what the price is.
I do know the price and it is 118,085 dollars, recognizing that from year to, from year to year, there will have to be replacement of the cartridges. I mean, what else is there to know? I guess I'm not clear what you're asking.
The 118,000 is the figure that you're, that is being requested for 51 tasers.
Yes.
The other known price is over and above that to, for the replacement of the electronic controlled weapons due to malfunctioning. So is it another X number of dollars per replacement?
For replacement of the TASER units that, that go bad in the five years, is that?
Yeah, I guess. I mean, I'm not an expert, but that's what it seems to say.
I think, just to try and, try and jump in the middle between the two of you to try and, I think it's, I think the interpretation of the sentence is being taken differently depending on either one of you who's reading it. The TAP option provides the department and the town with a guarantee that offices will have access to the less lethal tool for the next 10 years for a known price with coverage for service or replacement of the electronic control weapons due to malfunction. I think what you're indicating, Jeff, is that you're basically paying the 118 and change for a 10-year model because you have the five years and the five-year model, you know, with the accessories purchased originally.
Right.
And then in five years, you roll to new devices at no cost, which covers you for a 10-year period. So you're deeming that original 118 and change as a fixed known cost for a 10-year period of utilization of the original plus the new device when it's issued five years later. Is that what you're saying?
Right, and that's right. And if in the course of that five years, there's a TASER that malfunctions, there's a five-year warranty. So it's covered under warranty. If we purchase a one, you know, if we just spend 65,000 for 51 tasers, you know, just out of the gate, if after a year, two of those tasers go bad, the one-year warranty's expired and we pay whatever the price is for a new TASER at that point.
So I think that's what you were meaning, but back to your question over here, is when the re-issuance of the new tasers in five years, do we have to purchase new warranty sets for those new devices for the incremental five years? And also too, do we have to purchase incremental accessories for those new devices for those incremental five years?
Well, so the cartridges, which, you know, I guess I would equate to the bullets that go in a gun.
Right.
Once you use those, those are going to have to be replaced. There is going to be training that will take place every year. So there will certainly be training cartridges that will be expended and over the course of time, those will have to be replaced. That's not part of this.
Which is what the chief had mentioned to me when I had asked before for the $6,000 that he had talked about. So that takes care of that. And then in terms of the new devices issued at the five-year point, would those have to be re-warranted with an additional expense or would they be warranted for that five years, meaning years six through 10?
Chief, can you answer that question? Does the warranty in year five to 10, would those new units that are purchased in years, in year five, have a five-year warranty?
I'll defer to the deputy to answer that, Jeff. He's the one who knows, he's done all the statistics.
They, they are covered. So you can purchase an extra four years warranty if you purchase them outright for, the cost of that is 15,000, a little over 15,000 for the next four years.
Okay.
So ultimately, if you were to purchase for 65,000, 51 tasers, and it's actually, you get one TASER free in the TAP program for that. So the 65,000 is for 50 tasers. In order to get a four, a five-year warranty for that, it'd be an additional 15,000 for a total of 80,000 dollars, a little over 80,000 for that five years. In essence, what the town manager is telling you is that for the 118,085 dollars and I believe 37 cents, is you're actually going to receive 102 TASER units because you will get that additional 51 units at the end of the five years to carry you into the next five years. And those two will be warranted.
Okay.
Okay, so now, now I'm more confused because you just said 65,000, additional 15,000 for 51 tasers with a four-year guarantee. Now you're upping it to 118,000 with 15,000 for 133,000 for 102 tasers. So tell me, Deputy.
Okay, so if you were to purchase 50 tasers outright, the cost of that with the one-year warranty would be 65,000, a little more than 65,000, 65,234 dollars, I believe it was. That's not the TAP program. That is covering them with a one-year warranty.
How many, 51?
50.
50.
And you get one free.
Well, not, not in the, not in that program.
Right, not in that program, right.
It's 50 units.
If you wanted to purchase an extra four years of warranty for those, because they're only covered for the one year, that would be an additional 15,000. That's an outright purchase.
Madam Chair, if I may, so I just want to make sure I'm clear here. So if we go with the TAP program, is it your estimation that we're going to estimate 30 to 40,000 savings over the course of 10 years?
That's my expectation, yes. And because we're, we're not going to have to pay for that additional 15,000 of coverage, we will, the 118 includes the five-year warranty for the first five, the five years for the second, you know, the five, five years on the second stretch. And as the deputy noted, effectively, we're purchasing 102 tasers, 51 for the first five-year stretch and then 51 for the second five-year stretch. So for 118,085 dollars and 37 cents, that is the cost, recognizing that there will be additional ongoing costs for the replacement of the expended cartridges, which is going to happen in either scenario.
So to me, it feels kind of like, I don't know, like, like oil delivery. Sorry. You know how you can, at the beginning of the seasons, many of the, the oil delivery companies will offer you the opportunity to lock in a price for the season? And the actual price of oil may go up or down during the season, but you pay the price that you got in September. So what you're talking about with this known price is over the course of 10 years, we know what we're paying, 118,000, as opposed to the buy outright program. We have no idea what the price would be in five years when it's time to buy them again. And so maybe it goes down, maybe it doesn't go down, maybe it goes up substantially and now we're on the hook. And so, so what we're buying effectively, I think, is an insurance policy against, against inflation or against a larger expenditure five years from now, which would ultimately end up costing the town, as Greg just said, I think a substantial amount more money in the end. So I don't, it might, is that a stupid analogy or does that make sense to anybody?
It does make sense. It does make sense, but I mean, it depends, it's really consumer buying habits.
Yeah.
I mean, it, you know, it's a recommendation from the police department to enter into this program for reasons that they feel are justified for the following business reasons at this said price. My goal in having the memo taken out, and I certainly, you know, can respect Kevin's position, your position, anyone else's position, the intent of this memo was information clarity. And I think it's important for everyone on this board to feel like they've had ample opportunity to say their piece, but I just want to give a friendly reminder and I don't direct this at anyone, this is ultimately going to go to the town meeting floor. So we're all going to have another bite at the apple in terms of being able to present in front of a larger audience regarding, you know, our opinions about whether this should or shouldn't, you know, gain favorable approval. And it also, you know, went to the Finance Committee as well. Do you happen to know if the Finance Committee approved this through their voting?
They did.
Was it a unanimous vote?
There was one abstention.
Okay. So, you know, I think your points, you know, Kevin, I understand where you're coming from, I understand people have questions. And I think if you have further questions, I think you should continue to have dialogue with the manager and I'm sure the, the police department would be willing to sit down if necessary to go over any information. I'm kind of pledging your support upfront, but I think it kind of goes without saying that I think whatever clarity and facts and figures can be discussed, and you'd be open to doing that, Chief, in your, your office?
We wouldn't bring the program forward if we didn't think it was in the best interest of the community for what we've seen in the communications we've had with other departments that have, have TASER.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Next is under Board to Consider. Just a notification from the Mass Department of Transportation for the town's fiscal 2018 projected allotment of Chapter 90 money, which as you know is funding for road repairs. The amount projected this year is 761,621. This is subject to the bond authorization that the state will have to go through. The amount is 761,621.
621.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump one?
Yeah, that's okay.
Actually, under correspondence prior to that, we had just noticed from Mike Woods, the Public Works Director advising about road work that will be done first across street from Lowell Street to Main Street. We are going to be repaving that. The work will begin on Wednesday, the 19th, and we expect that the work will be completed prior to the open, open house at Yentile. And then the second area is old Andover Street, old Salem Street and to Route 62. I actually do have a, a map, just if, would be helpful in terms of clarity as to the specific areas involved.
Madam Chair, if I may, quick question. I assume that there'll be other roads that are going to be paved this season as well? Is that correct?
Yes. I don't have the full schedule here, but these are a couple of, a couple of areas.
And if residents wanted to inquire about whether their road was going to be paved or not, should they contact the manager's office or the DPW?
I would have them contact DPW, that they would be able to provide that information.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so we covered Mass DOT. The correspondence from Mass Department of Environmental Protection is regarding potential grants for yard waste and other solid waste materials. We are looking into whether there's anything that we would be eligible to pursue in that vein.
Okay. Moving on to the Board to Consider items at this time, please.
Okay, under Board to Consider, we have a request from Michelle Garcia to hold a birthday party at the Rotary Park. Her initial request was for Saturday, the 22nd of April. That is actually the rain date for the Little League. So it's somewhat unclear, I guess depending on what the weather, this Saturday, as to whether they'll need that date or not. I've been in touch with her to suggest an alternate date. She's now interested in having the party on Sunday, the 23rd, and the time would be 1:00 to 5:00 PM.
So the 23rd, is that also the Kim Forty walk?
It is.
Yes.
And where in Wilmington is, is the route, does the route overlap that?
No.
It doesn't? Okay. Okay. So do you want us to be entertaining a motion for an April 23rd date or do we want to do both dates to cover this motion? How do you want to?
I inquired of her and she, her preference, because she's sending, I guess, invitations, is that we go, the Board consider the 23rd, 23rd date.
Questions, comments for a motion to grant the request for Sunday, April 23rd? So you'd be striking the date that's in your correspondence to reflect the 23rd?
Yes, this is based upon more recent communications.
Just a quick question or comment. I know we've permitted this before, but they've also been I know we've permitted this before, but they've also been informed that it's a public area, there might be other people.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, she was advised that it is a, that, that her group would not have exclusive rights to Rotary Park, and that there's no grilling or that kind of activity.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to grant the request to Michelle, Michelle Garcia, for the use of Rotary Park on April twenty-third from one to five.
Okay, motion made. Actually, is it twelve-thirty that you said?
Well, one to five.
One to five, okay, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
The next request is from Tina Stewart. I'll get it right here. Let me get to the file. Tina Stewart sent a memo to the Board looking for authorization to use the Swain Green in the town common on particular dates here during the summer, the first being Thursday, July twenty-seventh, ten A.M. to one P.M. for a so-called Teddy Bear picnic. Children with parents will be invited to bring a picnic lunch and enjoy a concert by Ed Morgan, a children's musician and singer. Then also looking for the date of Thursday, August eleventh, five P.M. to eight P.M., the Summer Bash. The library, library will host its second annual Summer Bash. We will invite residents to enjoy a summer evening on the Swain Green, where they can purchase dinner from Amigos Locos Tex-Mex or Wildfire BBQ food trucks, affordable prices plus kids menu, followed by a refreshing Richie's Slush. Music will, will once again be provided by Quinton Calvert Quartet. Children's games and entertainment will be part of the evening festivities. And then the final date, September twenty-third, nine A.M. to twelve noon, the Town Shredding Day. The library will host its seventh annual shredding day for residents to shred personal documents. The library will again be collaborating with the Wilmington Community Fund, who has generously agreed to subsidize the cost of the two shredding trucks. A food or monetary donation to the Wilmington Food Pantry is suggested.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
Move to grant the request for the three dates.
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second, yes.
Any discussion? All set, no recommendations, things of that nature?
Yes, there's no conflicts.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Under Board to Consider, we have a request for a renewal of a second-hand license. This is from Robert P. Flaherty Jeweler, Inc., and the recommendations as follows. I have a recommendation from the police chief. Upon review, Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of Paul P. Flaherty's application to renew the second-hand dealer license. Recommendation from the Fire Department, the Wilmington Fire Department recommends approval of the license renewal application submitted to the town for the business located at two forty-eight Main Street identified as Robert P. Flaherty Jewelers. As building inspector, after review and consideration of the town of Wilmington by laws and all applicable codes, I have no outstanding zoning issues with the above referenced business. Pam McKenzie, the treasurer, indicates I have no issues regarding the renewal of Mr. Flaherty's second-hand dealer's license permit.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request?
I'd make a motion, I'd be grant the request, and just let me say that he's a great businessman, he does a great job, and he's been always good to our community. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the conclusion of our business, and at this point, I will entertain public comments. Yes.
I didn't get up earlier with the, you were getting the kudos, but allow me to give you my kudos. When I worked with you on this board, you were nothing but professional, respectful, class. The two years that you served as chair on this board were very prime times for different reasons. The way you handled yourself and represented this board was second to none. And it was said too about your volunteerism in this town, and you're not going to go away, but I tell you, you are the epitome of a Wilmington resident.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that.
Thank you.
On another note, if I might, I'd like to stand up here and defend my department. There's a, I don't want to say gentleman, a person that's running for selectman that feels that every time he has a microphone in front of him, he likes to bash the Department of Veteran Services. Fortunately, he left. Not calling him a coward or anything, but he's a coward, because he knew I was here, and he was going to stand up perhaps tonight and say something again. If there's an individual that needs help, that's a veteran, send them our way. We will get them all that they are eligible for and that they qualify for. I am not a denying department. The state denies state benefits, and the V.A. either issues or denies federal benefits. So for him to stand up in front of a microphone, every chance he gets, he bashes me personally and my department, is just wrong, and I wish he was here, I could tell him to his face. That's just his style. But thank you, I felt obligated to, to defend my department. And thank you to the guys that showed up tonight, too. That's very nice of them to take time out of their day, kind of bothered them too about getting my department bashed.
Absolutely. Just want to say, thank you very much for the personal kind words, and I appreciate you being here. I hope that you were able to see the meetings and see that we had, as a whole board, united together to support you and your department and everything that you do, and I had the pleasure of meeting all of these handsome gentlemen out in the parking lot. I wish that I could have spent more time to talk with you personally, but as you can see, we, we spend a lot of time having fun in here, so, and it's super exciting, you know, material. So, I appreciate you being here for the duration of the meeting and also for supporting Lou. So, this is public comments. You certainly have the right to speak if anyone in this room wants to make any sort of comments. I think, yes, sir, if you can just state your name.
I'm Frank Keating, I'm a road captain for the American Legion Riders Dirty Water Group in Cambridge. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I just wanted to say how gratefully I follow Lou. He's helped us quite a bit in the past. He's recognized us at the Landry Breakfast, and Mr. Landry's a hero of this town. He's also recently helped us gather some supplies for some homeless veterans that we're going to be supplying these things with next week. And I just wanted to say thank you to Lou from my crew for the fine work he does. He, anytime there's a veteran in need, he calls us, we come up, we support the veteran. And he's supported us in our own hometown, Egypt, Cambridge, so Lou's always there for us. He's been to all of our Gold Star and other events, and, you know, I personally want to thank him, and I want to thank him for my crew.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you for your service, obviously, working with you. I've known you many, many years and worked with you in your position on the Board. We really appreciate your support of us over the many, many years. As far as Lou goes, you know, we have a lot of dedicated people in the town of Wilmington, and I can tell you, because I talk with Lou quite frequently, and we work very closely relative to veterans' issues. He works basically sixteen to eighteen hours a day. He's always in the office, he's always on the phone, and he's constantly supporting our veterans in this community. And, you know, I know sometimes as department heads, we take some hits, and sometimes we feel slighted for it, but this literally is a situation where it could be no more off the mark than the comments that were made earlier. Lou supports his veterans, he fights for them daily. I know that because I worked with him on that, and we have one of the best in the world. Right, thank you.
Yeah, it is.
I just wanted to reiterate what Chief said, what our guy said, you know, it goes beyond the job and the pay. It's the other hours, the off-hours, the dedication, the money out of your pocket to help a veteran in need. None of us get paid for what we do. We're here tonight to support a guy that's going way above and beyond, and it's physically got his hands dirty when we do markets for Gold Star families also.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So I've definitely witnessed you going out to emergency events and different things, and, you know, we talk on a regular basis, so I definitely know all that you do, and it's a labor of love. I, I think you'd do the job if you didn't get paid. The fact that you get paid is just an extra bonus so that you can take care of your family in, in the way that they deserve to be taken care of, so that's a credit to you. And there's very few people that you meet in your lifetime that love what they do and they get paid doing it, and I, I am so, I couldn't be happier for you to have the job that you have, because it is so you, and you are so good at what you do, and you have made a difference in so many lives, and so, you know, I just can't thank you enough. When I first started, I remember being introduced to you for the very first time when I ran for school committee and you were running for selectman, and we never met each other. And now, I just think you're an absolute doll, and you're, you'll always be a sweetheart to me, so, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So moving on to new business items, not reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting, I'm going to start over to my right to Selectman Bendel.
Thank you very much, I concur. Lou, I wouldn't describe you as a doll, but you are certainly the best. I appreciate you being here, but good to have you back in this room, and I appreciate the veterans, I appreciate your service. Thank you guys for being here. I said it a couple weeks ago, we said it earlier tonight, but it goes, it bears repeating. Judy, thank you so much. Best wishes, I wish you all the best.
Thank you.
I want to just point out a couple things the manager's going to detail in a few minutes, but I would encourage everybody to get out and vote next week, or, excuse me, a couple weeks on Election Day. I would encourage folks to get involved with the WOW five K for Kim Forty, that walk is excellent, always a great time, big turnout for the community. And lastly, I'd like to wish my colleagues and everyone in the community Happy Easter.
Thank you.
Lou, you're leaving, but I just wanted to say you're doing outstanding job.
I served Lou a long time, and I've said he's perhaps one of the best agents in the Commonwealth. He does a great job, and I have to say, Mr. McDonald was absolutely wrong coming out and saying that. I want to let you know that, you guys do a great job, and if you guys want any machine guns, just let me know.
And Lou, Lou, I think you are a sweetheart, by the way. I just want to say Happy Easter to everybody.
Thank you. Anything over here? Anything else? Any other comments for you, under new business?
Oh yeah, no, I have something I want to do in new business if I can, okay? I'd appreciate it.
I think we're at you.
I didn't know, I was just trying to give a nice compliment.
My only business, I'm just going to go quick and I'll let you have it, is, is, I think tonight begins Passover, so for our Jewish friends in the community, a blessed season to you and Happy Easter to all. Thank you.
All right, if I could, all right, I just, I just want to make a comment. I just have to say, it's out there and people are noticing, and I want to read something that appeared in yesterday's Lowell Sun column. I just want to read this. It says, "Post debate, one of Loud supporters traded sharp words with a departing McCoy in the WCTV lobby." People are talking about this. The Loud supporter to the whom the article's referring to is candidate Ed Loud wife, Doreen. After Mr. Loud got up in my face yelling at me immediately, I turned to Officer Dindo and asked him, "Would you please escort me to my car? I wanted to leave." As I was departing, the WCTV building along with Officer Dindo, Mrs. Loud screamed out at me in the entire room for everybody to hear, "You're gonna lose, you're gonna lose." I responded back, while I'm not part of the encrown clique, obviously. Sadly, this is not the first exchange I've had with Mrs. Loud. At our first Board of Selectmen's meeting around June of two thousand and sixteen, now I know there was a little verbal exchange between myself, Mr. Loud, and Mr. Newhouse. Okay, whatever. Such is local politics. The meeting ended fifteen minutes later. Mrs. Loud was not in that room at that meeting. As I was departing into the hallway of the town hall, I saw Mrs. Loud and her mother, who I love, Marilyn Cox, walking quickly towards me. Mrs. Loud again was in my face yelling at me, chest to chest, finger in my face, and within moments, Officer Shallowford and Sergeant Axelrod were in the hallway. I made a request to the police officers to please escort me out to my car, because I don't want anyone to accuse me of something I did not do. All this can be verified at the Wilmington Police Department if needed. They were there. You know, it's an unspoken but strictly followed rule in politics. You don't attack spouses or family members, ever. You do battle in a political arena, and then when you go about your business, that's it. In all of my twenty-seven years as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and believe me, I've done battles with many opponents, as bad as things got in all those years, I have never experienced the wife of a candidate or elected selectman aggressively lashing out me like Mrs. Loud. Based on my own personal experiences with the two candidates over the past year, I feel I could work better with Mr. McDonald. With Mr. Loud and his family there, and been nothing but anger, confrontation, aggravation towards me, I have never, ever once had an angry exchange with Mr. McDonald. This is by no means an endorsement, just an observation. I have always been willing to work with anyone as long as they have the best interests of the community at heart. To be clear, I'm not afraid of Mrs. Loud, but I am afraid of what she may say and possibly accuse me of something I did not do. This bothers me. I don't want to deal with this aggravation with Mr. Loud and his family for the next three years if he is elected. People have been talking about it, and that's the individual that we're talking about. That's all I want to say, Madam Chair. That's all I want to say.
Well, I have, I have the position of, of going last, you know, for this, and, you know, I, I didn't want the, the meeting to end on this note, but, you know, I feel, I feel compelled to just state that I'm particularly troubled about the fact that you're bringing your campaigning into this room and choosing to do that when it leaves someone else in the room not an opportunity to defend themselves, she's not here to defend herself, and I'm in a position now where I have parting comments, and I think, you know, you have taken opportunities through the newspaper, through public forums, and preparing these statements, and quite frankly, trying to surprise people and embarrass them. You've done it to me on more than one occasion, now you're doing it to Mrs. Loud. You put out things, you're going to get things back, Michael, and you have taken shots at me, you've taken shots at a lot of other people, and, you know, I know you've had a lot of nice things to say to me tonight, but you have really crossed the line in a lot of ways, and I think it's unfortunate that you would speak about another candidate's wife when they're not even here. If you want to go face-to-face and have a sit-down discussion with people, and you want to handle things, that's one thing, but to come in here and have a one-sided conversation and get your last shots on TV and get them out in public when people aren't even here to have a counterstatement, it's a, it's a one-sided thing, and as far as I'm concerned, you're not fighting fairly in doing that. You have the right to support whatever candidate you want. I find it very interesting, considering the fact that Ed Loud has been on the Board of Appeals for fourteen years, to which you actually have appointed him during all of those sessions. Also, too, I never knew Mr. Ed Loud until he was on the Yentile Farm Development Committee, because each member of this Board of Selectmen was able to appoint one member of their choice. Ironically, you appointed Mr. Edward Loud to that position. I never knew Mr. Ed Loud until that point. Now you bring into the campaign piece that I'm playing some sort of dirty trick to try and get him through the back door. Respectfully stated, or not respectfully stated, I have no statutory legal requirement to say when I am going to run and the reasons why I am or I'm not going to run, I'm fulfilling my obligation. For you to say that I'm doing a dirty trick, the, the door was open for people to run, people pulled out papers and they didn't return them, and I have made no hesitation, anyone that's asked me what my intentions were, I announced it through Robert Hayes, I announced it through social media, and you still went ahead and personally attacked me, and I took the high road because I wasn't going to get down in the gutter and roll around with you over it, but that is absolutely categorically false. And I don't have to answer to you or to anyone whether or not I want to run or not run and the reasons why, and I might have personal business that is none of your business as to why I'm not running. So, I just don't understand why you choose to bring these political discussions into this room when your campaigning should take place outside of Room Nine. So, maybe you are, you know, feeling that you have the right to just go off on this, but it's really not appropriate. Not appropriate.
All right, let me just say something. You know, with all due respect, this happened in the hallway, not here in this room, where the, where this takes. But wait a minute.
Right, but you're bringing it into a Board of Selectmen meeting.
No, we had two members of police officer, and I had to ask that. This happened, and you were at WCTV in the carpet room watching it, so I'm sure you wanted to see your candidate, and that's fine. And it was said in that room in front of everybody. I had to have Officer Dindo, "Please, can you get me out of here, take me in my car as I'm walking out?" It needs to be said, but you keep on saying one thing about not having people in the room. The bottom line is, I did appoint Mr. Loud to the Yentile Committee. Call me and ask me to do it. Call me and ask me to do it, okay? But you talk about, you say that you don't respond, you talk about me.
How am I doing it to myself?
You're doing it to yourself. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just pointing that out. I'm just pointing out what's going on. I mean, you talk about, you know, in the past, you know, obviously, it's nice to go out on a high note, okay? And everything I've said is states and factual, and I'll say it again, in all my 27 years, I've done battle with a lot of individuals. I must be doing something right to be on the board for 27 years. I've never encountered a spouse, or a wife, or a son, or a daughter to lash out at me, never. And that happened in that hallway, not in this room, and I see that she's here, okay? Obviously, obviously, let me finish. Let me finish. Obviously, see? This is what we're dealing with, okay? This is what we're dealing with. I understand you have people you want to support, fine. I'm not supporting anybody. I'm making an observation. I'm willing to work with anybody as long as they have the best interests of the community. And I don't play these little games. If you take a look, forget about, forget about, forget about the smartphone.
How is what's happening right now in the best interest of the town?
Forget about the smartphone. It appeared March 1st on the front of the town crier that you weren't running.
To which the town crier knew previous and they chose not to.
That's it. Right, right. And then on March 1st. But you see, but you branled it up. You brought this up. You guys brought that up.
This doesn't have to do with the town.
I'm just pointing out what you're doing.
The people of Wilmington.
And you don't like that because I'm putting the dots in a row.
What dots?
You don't like that. You talk about character, you're putting this upon yourself. I'm just pointing it out. That's all. That's all.
Putting it upon myself that I announced it and didn't call you?
No, you talk about me doing character, you just point, I'm pointing this out. I'm lining all the dots, absolutely.
The problem is, is that you're misinformed, Mr. McCoy.
No, I'm not misinformed.
And you're the last to know, because you're using the town crier as your one communication outlet. And you, sir, are not the moral compass in terms of how I'm going to conduct myself up on this seat and when I'm out of this seat.
No, I understand. March 1st was on the front page of the crier. You did talk to the app, right?
That's when they chose to write it, but that's not when they knew about it.
Hey, he submits his national papers on March 1st. Come on, that's a coincidence? In the, in the town crier? All I'm telling you is, it's fine for you to say to be, it's fine for you to say.
Mr. McCoy, if you call the town crier and ask them when they knew about it, have you verified with the town crier that that's when they knew about it?
All I know is what I read when I saw the paper.
That's when they chose to write about it, but that's not when they notified.
I just saw it on the March 1st edition.
Correct.
You know, and it was posted in the town crier. He submitted papers on March 1st.
That's fine, but that's when they chose to write about it. That's not when they were made aware of it.
All I'm telling you is, I'm just pointing out what you're saying, I'm just lining all the dots, and I stand by that, correct. And I'll say it again, I've done battle with a lot of selectmen. I must be doing something right to be here for 27 years, and I've never had people lash out at me like this. Never, 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 never. And I don't feel comfortable going out there. Both times, there was two police officers in that hallway, and Officer Dindo, I believe his name is Chris, Officer Dindo said, "Please, will you get me out of here? I want to go home." And that's exactly what he did. That's all I'm going to say. Everyone saw it, you were there at WCTV, I'm walking out, you're going to lose, you're going to lose. I don't need to hear that. You know, and I'm only stating what's happened. You were, you were there, you, what did you hear? You're going to lose, you're, I said, "Please, get me out of here, I want to go home. I want to get out of here." And, you know, and I'll be honest, you know, I'm just uncomfortable with that. This has never happened to me in 27 years.
So, take it out in the town crier and put it there. Why do you have to use this puppet to be able to do that?
Everything and anything that's ever happened to me in these walls has happened outside. Everything and anything, if I take a political stand on what I do, that's why, what do you think I'm a candidate tonight? Here I am, coming out of candidate tonight, and I got someone in my face, finger in face, chest to chest, yelling at me. I go, "Let me out of here."
Mr. McCoy, your comments are completely out of order.
No, let me tell you something.
They are out of order. I'm ruling you out of order.
Well, I'm telling you, that's exactly happened. You were there. Did you hear it say, "You're going to lose, you're going to lose"? You were there, did you hear it?
I did not hear that.
Did you hear it?
No, I didn't.
That was said, that was exactly said. You said, "You're going to lose, you're going to lose." But you see, no, no, you know, here I am. I've never dealt with a wife or spouse like this.
Mr. McCoy, I have ruled, I have ruled you out of order for your comments.
I know, because you don't want me to say anything.
No, you've already said enough. I've given, I've given you ample opportunity, ample opportunity. In your previous comments towards me, clearly, with this is completely disingenuous. So, in terms of what's truth and what's not truth, you really, you think I'm doing it to myself? I don't need to report to you when I'm running or when I'm not running. People in this room can attest that they've known well before March 1st, according to you and your story.
Don't do it. I'm pointing it out.
Okay.
I'm lining all the dots.
Okay. According to you.
I never said to you, "You're the most disingenuous person I've ever met." You said that to me.
You are the most disingenuous person, and I stand by that.
I never said to you, I never said to you, you said to me, "I don't like you, but I will work with you." And I never said to you.
That's right, I don't like you, but I will work with you.
I never said, I never said to you that I would like to see you lose an election, and you said you hope I lose this year's election.
Right, and here's the thing, if I really wanted and had it out for you, I would run against you, and I would have recruited somebody to run with you to try and unseat you. I didn't, okay? So, you're right, every single thing that you restated.
You may have won, but I would have still won an election.
That's correct. I did say that, I still feel that today.
Two strong incumbents.
Everything I said.
You're a strong incumbent. I'm a strong incumbent, and by delaying it, you gave it up, you, a press and a newcomer, figure, wow, I'm, two newcomers are strong.
So, are people not running, and 23,000 people, they're not running because I decided to run? I must think I'm pretty important, and you must think you're pretty important.
Then all of a sudden, it's out there, and only a few days left to deadline. All right, please, okay? If you ran, you probably would have won, and I think I would have won.
You're pretty presumptuous of the fact that you and I were just going to walk away with it. 23,000 people here, and you think they're going to wait to decide what you and I are doing? You think you have that much drag around here?
I don't.
I mean, really? I mean, that's a pretty gutsy statement. It pretty much sounds like you are.
No, you're trying to.
You're telling me that the fear factor of everyone else running against me is the